You ready?
Yep.
Okay. I hereby call the 2,292nd meeting of the Milwaukee City Council to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Our first item tonight is the Milwaukee High School Outstanding Student Achievement Award for May 2019, presented to Jacob Delameter, and which we... Did I totally mispronounce that?
Yeah, it's okay, though.
Don't have to tell me how to do it. Sorry. Principal Gellman, will you please join us?
Sure.
Come on up, Jacob. Have a seat.
Good evening. So this is Jacob Delameter, and I'm very excited to bring him forward tonight. When I started at Milwaukee as the transition principal last year, towards the end of the year, right away, you know, being with students is my favorite thing. And walking around the Commons and the school, I started looking for different leaders in the school, and right away I noticed Jacob. He was sitting at a table in the Commons with a bunch of other students. And just his demeanor and how he carried himself and how he behaved was just, I knew right away, he was a leader. He's always been super respectful, very kind, and so I've just really been impressed with Jacob. And he's also on our student advisory committee, and he's really stepped up to the plate in that as well. And so I'm just really impressed with you, and I feel very honored to have you here tonight. And you're just such a good example of a wonderful young man, and I really appreciate you, Jacob. And so I want to read a couple things that a couple people said about you. Jacob played football this year and was one of the most consistent players. He showed great work ethic and leadership during the season, and that's from his coach. And it was a struggle this year. Our practices were taking place at Alder Creek Middle School. We were going through construction. And just through it all, Jacob always showed up. He always showed up, and he was always positive, and just a stand-up person. Jacob is a stand-up guy that plays football and baseball, as well as being a cadet for the Milwaukee Police. Great choice for student of the month for Mr. Taylor. Officer Knold says that Jacob Delameter is an example of young leadership. He demonstrates this via his balance of school, sports, work, and extracurricular responsibilities. This includes volunteering his time as a Milwaukee Police Cadet and graduating the Cadet Academy with honors for perfect attendance and an excellence award in building searches. Jacob's attitude towards hard work and care for others is exemplary to his classmates and others. And I was laughing because today Officer Knold came into my office, and I said, "Do you have Jacob's cell number?" And I talked to Jacob earlier, a couple weeks ago, and said, "I want to nominate you for this, and here's when it's taking place." But then today got really busy, and I always check in with kids at the last minute. And she said, "Well, I have his number." And so we called him on speakerphone. And I said, "Be there at 5:00 to 6:00." And she said, "What does that mean, Jacob?" And he said, "5:30." So that's just an example of what a great young man he is. And I'm just really excited to bring him forward today. So we also have a couple of folks here that are here to support him as well. So...
Do they want to come up?
Do you guys want to come up?
Do you guys want to say anything?
Sure.
Do you want to sit in my seat?
I'll steal it from you for just one right, one quick second.
Okay.
Chief Luke Straight with the Police Department. I just want to add that we really appreciate Principal Gellman and the high school's support of Jacob, and as well as our program. We recognize Jacob as the type of person that we're looking for, not only in our cadet program, but as a future police officer potentially, if that interests him. We work hard to identify the right individual early on in selection processes. And the right individual is someone that's able to do the wide variety of tasks that are expected of a police officer, but that they also really have that heart for service. And Jacob is obviously an example of that in the way that he has dedicated his time to the cadet program, which is all volunteer time. Jacob just finished the Cadet Academy, and that spanned several months where they're giving their weekends away for free to train in law enforcement. And throughout that academy, he was also awarded with perfect attendance, which is extremely underrated award, as well as other awards such as for building search. So he really does represent an excellent student at the high school and just a great human being, and he's a real asset to our program, and we're super happy to have him. Thank you.
Thanks. I would like to start.
Oh, I'll start.
Okay.
Well, I was just thinking, you know, with the chief's remarks, that this is the perfect ending because this is our last student of the month from Milwaukee High School. And I was just, when you were talking about the dedication to service, I think that that's certainly a common thread through, you know, all of the students that we see here every month. You know, everyone, you know, really is, you know, exceeding at what they choose to do. You know, you're excelling in athletics or academics or, you know, wherever your interests take you. But I think the most important thing, and what I find so exciting and so, you know, personally rewarding, sitting here and hearing about these, you know, hearing about these young people is how committed they are to serving the community. And so thank you so much for everything that you're doing and for your interest in working with our police force because we're very proud of them. We think that they do excellent work in the community. And so that speaks a lot about you. I also just want to say again, thank you to Principal Gellman and the adults behind you who are here supporting you. You know, everything that you've achieved has been just, you know, your own work and also the dedication of your community in supporting you. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Did you want to come and say something?
I might as well.
Okay.
Came all the way in and didn't say anything. Officer Mark Inman with Milwaukee Police. I help administrate the cadet program at the officer level, so I spend probably the most time with this guy when he's over there. And I really can't add a lot to what people are saying other than just having the opportunity to be on the front lines and see how his attitude is towards service and yes sir, no sir. And no mistake is repeated because he listens and he works at it. He just really works at excellence. And all of our young adults do that in some way. I just especially like the way he does it, the way he approaches it. And I came to one of your games once and just wanted to recognize volunteerism because I like to show him to people and say, "Look, this is an example of what you can do as a volunteer, as a young person. There's so many things attacking you at this age, you know, to draw your attention different ways." You know, and I feel like you get it in that regard. I think all young adults get something, but you definitely get that piece of it, community service. And it just, it gives me a lot of encouragement to keep doing what I'm doing. So thanks for that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, well, I won't repeat all the great things everybody's said, but it's exciting to me to have a... I don't remember in four years of being on the council having another student of the month who had been a police cadet. So that's, I love that that's the experience you bring. And I thought I'd like to ask you, since I don't know that much about our cadet program, what thing in the program was most challenging to you? And what thing in the program was most rewarding to you?
I would say, like, honestly, they're combined. The situations, I like seeing a lot of, like, what our city has to offer and going around with our officers and just seeing how our community works. It's, of course, could always be a negative, but in a way, there's always a positive with it. So I enjoy just seeing our community.
And have you grown up in Milwaukee your whole life?
Yes, ma'am.
You have?
Yeah, I've lived here all my life.
Great, great. Well, congratulations. And I expect we'll be seeing you on the police force one of these days.
Thank you.
Yeah, so not too long till you're 21, what, three, four years? Somewhere in there. And that's his goal, is to be a Milwaukee Police Officer by the time he's 21. So, you know, looks like we got some good training already in there. I was just curious because I'm involved with some other things in the community. If as a cadet, you've had the chance to be at shop with a cop... I haven't seen all the kids that are there every year, but I know that a lot of our cadets go to that, so...
I did participate in that and enjoyed it.
Yeah, well, I hope you enjoyed it, and I hope you come back.
Oh, for sure.
Okay, great, great. Thank you so much for being here, and thank you, Carmen, for bringing such great young people before us. It's really awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm always fascinated when I encounter people under 20 who have clear direction in what they want to do with their life because I cannot relate to that personally. So I'm wondering what has drawn you to police work and to serving as a cadet? And, you know, how you got to where you are now and where you want to go?
I would say that up until about, like, junior year, I didn't really have a plan on what I want to do when I was older. And I was talking to...
Thank you, that makes me feel better.
Yeah. And just one day, I was talking to Officer Knold, and she brought up, you know, I should join the program. And so one day, I just, I filled out, did all the essays in one day, and I turned it in. And then like a week later, I got a call asking to come in for an interview. And ever since then, I mean, like, I went on a couple right-alongs with Mark, and I just enjoyed it so much that it's just something I want to do when I'm older.
Great. That's, I love hearing that about our police force because the job can easily be reduced to just maintaining law and order. And I think our police department does a great job of illustrating that. It's so much more than that. And I think you really understand that from what I'm hearing. And I would be glad to have people like you protecting our community.
Thank you.
Yeah, it gives me a lot of hope for the future when we meet young people like you and see you coming up this way and choosing to be part of what we obviously are all very proud of, our police force. And that you grew up here and you've watched them and you've been part of this community, and that's caused you to aspire to do that. Says a lot, right? Says a lot about the force, it says a lot about you. Where did, did you say where you're going to school? Where are you thinking about going to school?
I'm looking at going to Clackamas Community College to stay local.
Cool. It's a good school, too.
How convenient, we're annexing it, so you'll still be in Milwaukee.
Not the whole campus, just Harmony.
It's a start.
Oregon City might.
They'll try and steal him away.
Yeah.
Anyway. So it's very exciting. And I'm sorry I mispronounced your name. You might get that a lot, I'm guessing, based on your father's response. So tell me again, how do you pronounce it?
It's Delamater.
Delamater.
Yes, sir.
Is it...
It's German.
It's German?
Yeah, sir.
All right, Delamater, cool. Thank you. All right. The City of Milwaukee is proud to recognize for outstanding student achievement in academics, civic engagement, and extracurricular activities at Milwaukee High School, Jacob Delamater. Let it be known to all that on this 21st day of May 2019, the City Council of the City of Milwaukee, Municipal Corporation in the County of Clackamas and the State of Oregon recognize this student as an excellent example of the bright future of this community and nation. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Did you guys really do the picture?
Did what?
Did you do the picture already?
Yeah, yeah, we did the picture before. We usually try and do that.
The Earl keys, okay, great. Okay, I only have like five slides, but I did want to show them to you just to give you a little bit of an update on what's going on with construction. And then I'll talk you through a couple of things that I have on my fold-out. So this is what we look like right now. The walls are going, everything's up, but the walls are going up next week. So this, I mean, I don't know, plaster and everything? I don't know, construction, but all that will be done. The first floor, they're going to start next week. They're really on track. It's very exciting to get to walk inside of this building and see what it's going to look like. And we're in the process right now of setting up a lot of different groups to pick out furniture for the different areas. And one of the areas that's really cool, it's called the Spacemaker. So it's just a huge room that's going to have cement floors. And I asked, "Well, can we use chalk on the cement floors for, you know, like, science or math?" And so that kids can really get creative. And so they're looking into that. But the Spacemaker is a place where kids can go in and do projects with the class. And there's all kinds of really cool things you can put in there. And we don't know we're going to put in there yet, but we're very excited about the possibilities. And it's just a really creative space where different classrooms can come in and spend time in the Spacemaker. But I don't know if I told you this last time, when I was up on the second floor in the library, when you go to the edge, you oversee the river. So it's just beautiful. And then if you go to the other end of the building, you can see the whole football field. So that's pretty exciting.
Are you going to be selling box seats to help?
I might. I don't know, I kind of want those seats. But it's just a beautiful view of the football field, and the building is breathtaking. The pictures are going to be... So this is one of the trees that was taken down in front of the old building. And it's being turned into a Mustang. So we're saving some of the wood that, from the tree, and that was a very special tree. And I know it was very important to this community. And so we wanted to make sure that we were able to save some of the wood to create different things inside the building. So this is just one piece that's being created, and it's huge. So as soon as you walk into the lobby, it's going to be in the lobby. But you're going to have to crane it in or something. I mean, it's a pretty big Mustang. And so this is being created right now with an artist... And so, this is being created right now with an artist in Salem and, and then when it's finished, I'll have more updated pictures. The other things that we're making are a timeline on a piece of the, the tree. So, there'll be a timeline and they're working with some alumni and some social studies folks in our school to create a timeline of the history of this community or the state and just different events that they can put on this, on this tree, so.
Like this, is it like the rings of the tree?
Yeah, it's the rings.
Oh, cool.
It's the rings of the tree. Thank you. So, it's the rings of the tree and, and then we also have some benches that are being made from the tree and lots of, there'll be a lot of really nice touches that bring in some of the old with the Neil. They gave me this picture just so you could see them hard at work. I think that's where the.
One guy down.
Yeah, so I think that's the, the lead shot over there, the first guy you see. But this is the one, I think this is where the library is. And so, as you can see, if you go to the edge, you can see the, the river. This is the inside, they're putting up the walls. We're getting cool monitors. We already have the monitors, but they're, that's the only thing that's going into the new building is the monitors that we have, which are really, really nice. We have a couple touchscreens where kids can go up to them and make things happen and then the others are just really big and interactive. Whoop, that was it. So, I don't have any more pictures, but I will walk you through a little bit of, you know, the building's like a horseshoe. And so, we have area one, two and three. And so, in area one, right now, they're, they're putting all the electrical cable in and the RTUs are going to be done by Friday. I don't know what RTUs are. Does anybody here know what RTUs are?
Anybody? Anybody?
Okay, well, good, I don't feel bad.
It sounds really impressive.
Yeah.
I bet you is unit, but I don't know what the RT is.
Yeah, so, and the sheet rock, that's the word I was looking for. The sheet rock is going, going to be going up starting this Friday. So, the first floor should be done fairly soon with all the sheet rock and then we're going to be able to start doing some tours with our staff. At this point, only with our staff because they have to get all the gear and make sure that they're safe. The electrical room will be finished. They're going to start installing the windows and that's in area one. So, area one is where you were seeing folks that were standing on the second floor, that's area three, so area one is on the other side and then the backside is area two. So, in area three, they're going to start putting in the skylights, framing the skylights, interior framing, shaft walls and cable tray hangers. And then in area two, they're putting in the fire sprinkler system. This is all like happening as we're talking. The lobby steel, the elevator steel, the frame exterior, the brick ledger and the exterior sheeting. So, that's what's happening with the new construction.
So, is it generally on schedule? Is it ahead of schedule? Is it behind schedule?
It is on schedule. We are set to move in fall of 2020 and we are, so this summer they're going in to redo the commons and they're going to expand the kitchen and put in lockers and everything. And so, we are shutting down the commons, the cafeteria piece anyway, on the seventh and we will be providing sack lunches for students in order to get folks in there to have enough time because we needed to extend the, the school year out and we're not going to have enough time to get it completed before school starts and we really want to get that done. So, we're going to do a couple barbecues and sack lunches and things like that to make it, make it fun, but we are going to get them in there as soon as we can.
Cool.
So, when you say you're supposed to move in next fall, meaning before school starts in a year?
In a year.
In a year.
So, we, we should, they're saying that we, we will be able to take over probably in July.
Okay.
And then doors opening for students in the fall, in a year.
Great.
And then they have to, then they're going to do the football field. So, the football field won't be complete, but we will be in the main building. Again, it's beautiful. There's a community room that will hold about 200 people. So, that's really exciting to be able to bring in the community and have different events and just, yeah, it'll be really cool.
Well, we look forward to a tour one of these days.
Yep. I can do that. Okay, well, thank you.
A good summer.
Yeah.
We'll see you in September, I assume.
Yeah, I'll be working over the summer.
All right. Our next item is Mental Health Awareness Month Proclamation. It'll be introduced by Council President Angel Falconer, our Police Chief Luke Straight and Gary Marshke of the National Alliance for Mental Illness.
We got it right?
Did I get that one right?
Good job. You've been practicing.
No, actually, clearly I failed earlier.
So, this is, I appreciate that, Gary, you've brought this before to us and so, thank you for the work that you're doing in the community. It's, so it's the National Alliance of Mental Illness, Clackamas.
Nationalize on.
Oh, okay. And, and I thought that, you know, it's really important that we highlight this, this issue in our community to try to de-stigmatize mental illness and part of doing this proclamation is, is an effort toward that. And I'm not going to speak very long because I actually am more interested in hearing from you. So, thank you for coming in and if you can tell us a little bit about the work that you're doing and I'd also like to hear from, from Chief Straight because I know this is certainly a big part of the community work that you're doing on the police force.
Absolutely.
And I've deferred to Chief Straight, so.
First of all, thank you for having me, Chief Luke Straight. And I'm, as you all know, I'm new in this role, just one month in. This is actually the first chance I've had to actually meet Gary Marshke. And we had a chance to chat briefly in the hallway and talk about when we can connect in the future and talk more about exactly how we're doing business now and ways that we can improve the way that we do business and try and meet the needs of our citizens and certainly the needs of everyone in the community that's dealing with some form of mental illness. I know Mr. Marshke is going to talk about the fact that approximately one in five adults is struggling with some form of mental illness and that certainly has a big effect on our day-to-day business. We're, we're seeing that and dealing with that the best that we can on a daily basis. And I know that partnerships such as this one with NAMI and Mr. Marshke can help us refine the way we respond to those and deal with those in the most compassionate and professional way possible.
Awesome. Well, thank you. And I want to thank the commissioners first of all for, for this and for the proclamation. We really do appreciate it. I'm Gary Marshke, do outreach and development for the National Alliance on Mental Illness here in Clackamas County. And I also want to extend the sincerest apologies of our executive director, Michelle Venker, who wanted to be here in the worst way, but there are three places for her to be and believe it or not, there's only one of her. So, she could only be in two, so I agreed that I would come out here and do this for her, so, and for NAMI Clackamas. So, there's going to be some sobering statistics in the proclamation, there always are. One is the one in five figure, the other one is that the number two cause of death among 10 to 24-year-olds is suicide. Now, in the face of those sobering statistics, I want to celebrate Mental Health Month, which is what May is, with some good news. And the good news is, in spite of all of that, recovery from mental illness is not only possible, it's actually probable. The recovery rates for mental illness are in fact far greater than illnesses like cancer and heart disease. The biggest obstacle that we face to recovery from mental illness is stigma. Now, the good news is, is that stigma is also completely curable. And in fact, we have curestigma.org as a destination for folks to find out how to cure stigma and in fact to take the quiz. So, that's really what I wanted to make sure we got across. I'd really also like to have us make every month Mental Health Month because we certainly really need it. And we really do, I do appreciate the symbolism of being up here next to the new police chief because incarceration has become the new treatment protocol for those that are mentally ill and it's really nice to have really progressive, forward-thinking public safety officers at the table with us to talk about better ways to do that. So, we really do appreciate that as well and look forward to that. So, I also have a gift for, for you folks, since we just completed the NAMI Walk 17th Annual. I can't tell you what we raised, I can't tell you how many people were there, other than to say the answer to both is a lot. But I do have official NAMI Walk t-shirts for each of you. Now, I will tell you that it is the universal extra large. Also has a newsletter tucked inside there.
Thank you.
So, if you do want to exchange it for size and be a fashion plate wearing this around there, I'll be happy to do that for you. And we also have t-shirts for you three if you'd like, all you need to do is let us know. And that is just to celebrate again the NAMI Walk. And I, my phone is, went dead. I would love it if somebody could take a picture of you guys with, you know, could you?
Sure, Scott can do that.
I need to reveal on you, but that would be awesome. I don't like to be in it, I would just like to have you guys doing this.
Oh, well, we need to have you all there.
Do you want to do it in front or?
However, yeah, just do it where it's most convenient, please.
Don't make, I don't want to make this too.
All right, perfect.
Yes, thank you, Luke, come on. Yep.
Awesome. Oh, thank you guys so much for your indulgence.
Thank you.
Really do appreciate it.
All right. Anything else you want to say before I read the proclamation?
No, I, I definitely agree with Mr. Marshke that incarceration is not the answer. There might be times when that is the only immediate solution, but that's certainly a temporary solution to the problem. So, working together with, with him and NAMI to look at the best ways we partner and better solve those problems would be our goal for the future.
Yeah, it seems like if you go back far enough in, to America's past, that wasn't the only solution before. And we kind of, kind of went backwards a little bit over the last, what did it to bend, 25, 30 years. So, hopefully we can reverse that and get back to where we.
Stop pendulum, sweetie, right?
Well, we're seeing great progress and I must say that, you know, our public safety officers here, both the sheriff's department and the local public safety officers have been very sensitive and very open to dealing with folks with mental health challenges and especially because it's fairly new to this community, dealing with it to the extent that we are. And so, I think that that's a very hopeful sign and we work very closely, you know, we provide crisis intervention training for the, for the sheriff's department, for their, for their training, so I know a lot of the officers go to that as well. So, now that we have a new police chief, we're really looking forward to enhancing that relationship and finding ways that we can work together.
Yeah, we're, we're very proud of, as you heard earlier, of our team and what a community policing force they've, they are and continue to become. So, all right.
They're good things.
Yes. Whereas mental health is part of everyone's overall health and well-being and mental illness, mental illnesses are prevalent in our county, state and nation within one, with one in five adults experiencing a mental health issue every year. And whereas stigma and the resulting discrimination is a primary obstacle to early identification and effective treatment of individuals with mental illness and their ability to recover to lead full, productive lives. And whereas approximately half of chronic, chronic mental illnesses begin by the age of 14 and suicide is the second leading cause of death of people ages 10 to 24. And whereas long delays of sometimes decades often occur between the time symptoms first appear and when individuals get help. And it is important to maintain mental health, learn the symptoms of mental illness to get help and cure the stigma and discrimination that too often interferes. And whereas every citizen and community can make a difference in helping cure the stigma and discrimination that for far too long has surrounded mental illness and discouraged people from getting help. And whereas public education and civic activities can encourage mental health and help improve the lives of individuals and families affected by mental illness. Now, therefore, I, Mark Gamba, the mayor of the city of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation in the county of Clackamas and the state of Oregon, to hereby proclaim, May 2019 is Mental Health Awareness Month. In Milwaukee, to increase public understanding of the importance of mental health, to promote identification and treatment of mental illness and to cure the resulting stigma and discrimination. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is Public Works Week Proclamation and this will be presented by Peter F. Passarelli.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Gamba and council members. I'm here this evening to, to introduce the proclamation for National Public Works Week, which runs from May 19th through May 25th. 2019 actually marks the 59th annual celebration of National Public Works Week by, by the American Public Works Association. As you know, the many divisions of our public works are essential to providing the city a healthy and safe environment for our residents. Our public works department is staffed by 39 hardworking, dedicated employees focused on providing vital services to the community. Public Works ensures community members can move safely through city streets and that our community facilities are lit and warm and ready to be utilized. Public Works staff provide community members with clean drinking water, working day and many nights and weekends, so that every Milwaukee home can turn on the tap and have safe, clean drinking water. Milwaukee Public Works also serves another essential role in the city as stewards of our natural resources and educators for climate preparedness and community resiliency. Through detailed storm water management, Public Works staff work to protect our waterways and riparian areas and encourage sustainable practices for community members, businesses and industries. Through the Urban Forest Management Plan, Public Works looks to expand our urban canopy and the natural resources staff are tirelessly planting the right trees in the right places in our community to spread the benefits of that canopy. Implementation of our Climate Action Plan, the most progressive in the region, starts at the Public Works Department and extends to all the city departments and throughout the community. Public Works takes every effort to lead by example for the community climate action by preparing resilient utility systems, cutting fleet and facility carbon emissions and promoting natural systems that mitigate some of the climate change's impacts. Public Works staff engage with community members on climate education and develop outreach strategies to promote council and climate goals. So, in short, from utilities to climate action, Public Works does a lot for the community, but it's work gladly done out of love, dedication and commitment to a healthy and thriving Milwaukee community now and into the future.
Thank you.
Can I just say, I'm glad you did this proclamation? I don't think we've generally done one for Public Works Week or maybe we've done one once, but it hasn't been a regular thing and, and I do think so many people don't realize that, you know, it's not just magic that they get water and toilet, their toilets flush and, and all of those things. And there's, you know, that trees get removed when the, when storm comes or, you know, flooding gets clear, you know, catch basins get cleared out when there's flooding and all of those things. So, I think it's, it's really important to recognize the Public Works Department and, yeah. So, I hope we put a little attention toward that on our social media too and, and in the pilot and things like that going forward to make it more of a, of a thing that we note as a community, so.
Thank you.
Well, and I think we have a particularly outstanding Public Works Department, have had for a long time, but I think you've brought a new level to the work that they do and a new sort of broader thought process around the, what Public Works means and, and what it does for the community. And that's huge. It makes all the difference. Thank you personally for the work that you do. All right. Whereas public work services are important to the health, safety and well-being of Milwaukee citizens. And whereas these services are provided through dedicated Public Works professionals who oversee water distribution, water treatment, wastewater treatment, sewer systems, equipment, services, public properties, solid waste systems. systems, equipment, services, public properties, solid waste systems, city streets, and water utilities. And whereas 2019 marks the 59th Annual National Public Works Week, and this year's theme is "It Starts Here." Now therefore, I, Mark Gamba, the mayor of the city of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation in the county of Clackamas in the state of Oregon, to hereby proclaim May 19 through 25, 2019, as Public Works Week in Milwaukee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is Dogwood Day Proclamation, which will be introduced by our city recorder, Scott Stoffer, Greg Heimer with the Milwaukee Historical Society, and Linda Kidd with the Daughters of the American Revolution.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and happy Dogwood Day to everybody.
Happy Dogwood Day, Scott.
It was on May 21, 1903, that the city of Milwaukee began its incorporated life, the sentence that Mayor Gamba gets to read at the end of every proclamation, "Beheem Municipal Corporation in the county of Clackamas in the state of Oregon." And so this is the 116th year we celebrate that. It's essentially our city's birthday. And since the middle of the 20th century, the city's nickname has been the Dogwood City of the West for historic reasons. The world, once the home of the world's largest dogwood tree near the corner of 32nd and Harrison, on the property of our first mayor's house, Mayor Schindler gave us the nickname. It was declared by a joint effort of a tree council of some kind, World Federation of Tree People and the Daughters of the American Revolution, and our historical society came together at the city. And the nickname has stuck for 60-plus years, and so here we are celebrating Dogwood Day. We've done a couple of things this year, and I'll turn it over to Greg to talk about it more, and then we have a couple of winners to recognize at the end, so. Greg?
Well, first of all, I would like to thank Linda for all that she does for the DAR and for hanging out with me on one of the Sundays at the farmer's market. I found out that she's cousins with the Shaws, believe it or not.
The Shaws who lived in my house?
Your Shaws, yes.
Oh, my goodness. Wow, okay.
So, good evening, mayor and councilors. Milwaukee Historical Society would like to thank city recorder office for including us in the Dogwood Day celebration. Milwaukee Historical Society owns and operates the only museum in the world dedicated to the history of Milwaukee, located at 3737 Southeast Adams Street. Our docents spend their volunteer time learning and expanding their knowledge about the history of Milwaukee. As we hold the largest archive on Milwaukee history, we are extremely qualified experts on our local history. We invite all to come Saturdays, 1 to 5, to research about their property, families, or any other question you may have about the city. May is a continuing celebration of our beloved dogwood emblem seen on literature, our city's website, and even manhole covers. We celebrate the dogwood because Mayor Schindler and his wife bought property with a small dogwood in the front yard on the corner of 32nd and Harrison Street. The dogwood became well-known, and in 1952, after 100 years of nurture, protection, love, and admiration, the dogwood was 65 feet tall and four foot round with a canopy stretching over 50 feet. The American Tree Association proclaimed it the largest and oldest Pacific dogwood in the world. In 1962, the beloved tree became a casualty of the Columbus Day Storm. But the tree stands so much more than just a logo. It is the essence of Milwaukee. The roots represent the rivers and trees that provide shelter and food for Native Americans, power and product for the first settlers, fertile lands for our orchards and farms, and the playground for us today. The trunk represents our government and police, providing the energy and stability our residents need to strive. The branches are symbols of our neighborhoods and businesses, connecting ourselves to prosperity and security. The leaves represent the residents of Milwaukee, providing the lifeline and creating energy for Milwaukee to grow and thrive. The flowers are symbols of the ideas brought forth from the residents, starting as buds, then blossoming into wonderful and adoring admiration. The seeds, they are our children. The ones as they sprout their own tree will carry the joy and values they learned from the dogwood tree. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And to mark this year, we did, we had two contests going on, well, one contest and one raffle. We had volunteers, Greg and I, and Councilor Parks, who worked at the city booth and helped us promote at the last two Sunday farmer's market, and we had a raffle for that beautiful specimen of a Cornus Nuttallie, the Pacific dogwood tree, over here on the table. And we do have a winner. Her name is Stephanie. She's very excited. She is a native of Missoura, or Missouri, and that state's tree is the dogwood. So she's very excited to plant her tree. So I don't know exactly where, but it comes with instructions and care from our public works professional, Julian, our arborist, with care for that tree, and she's very excited to pick it up tomorrow. And then we had an Instagram photo contest, and we have two, we have selected two winners. And if, when I get done talking here, I'll have them come up, Josh and Ben. If you could come up here in a second, we'll present you with a metallized photo of the historic dogwood tree. So, Mr. Mayor, before you read your proclamation, maybe I can have them come up and we can hand it off and.
Cool. Do we get to see their winning photos?
These are their photos.
Oh, okay, okay, got it.
Want to say which one is? Which is? The left is Josh. And the right one is Fitz.
Very nice.
We had 13 submissions on our Instagram photo contest and people using the hashtag "Milwaukee Dogwood Photos," so everyone can go out there and look and see they're all there. And then we had 133 people enter the free raffle. So over two weekends at the market, that's pretty darn good. And everyone was very excited. I didn't want to, don't want to sound like a downer, but I was kind of skeptical because, you know, taking on a tree is a responsibility. You got to have a place for it. And we heard plenty of people at the market, very conscious of the fact that they'd love to do it, but they want to give it a good home. But the people who participated were also very excited. We heard several times, well, I have a dogwood, I want another one. I don't have a dogwood, I used to have a dogwood. So it was quite popular, so.
Very cool.
Nice.
Very nice.
Linda, before I read this, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Just that it was a really positive experience, I think, for the community. And what a nice way to wrap our arms around the city.
Thank you. Whereas the beauty of the native Cornus Nuttallie or Pacific dogwood was nurtured and cultivated by the earliest settlers of the Milwaukee area, and whereas this community was incorporated on May 21, 1903 by the authority of the Oregon State Legislature and Governor George E. Chamberlain, and whereas on July 9, 1962, the city council designated the dogwood as the city's official flower and Dogwood City of the West as the city's nickname, and whereas by designating May 21 as Dogwood Day, the city is making note of our shared heritage with the earth and each other. Now therefore, I, Mark Gamba, mayor of the city of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation in the county of Clackamas in the state of Oregon, to hereby proclaim May 21, 2019 to be Dogwood Day in Milwaukee, the Dogwood City of the West.
Happy Dogwood Day.
Happy Dogwood Day.
Where's my doughnuts?
And for those present, we have plenty of Happy Dogwood Day buttons and stickers and postcards in the hallway and on the table there.
So our next item is Preservation Month Proclamation, and this will be introduced by Councilor Lisa Beatty and Greg Heimer, again, at the Milwaukee Historical Society.
Uh, well, I guess I'll introduce Greg, but Greg needs no introduction. The museum is, well, I'll let him tell you what the museum is cooking up in terms of recognizing historic preservation here in Milwaukee, but that is a topic of passion for me and living in a home that's 107 years old. And I think, and being a community with a lot of valuable historic buildings, not only from that early 20th century, but also from the mid-20th century, mid-century period. So I was glad to know the museum supported going, recognizing Preservation Month, so.
Well, we're happy to work with the council, of course, on this. So Milwaukee Historical Society, owners and operators of Milwaukee Museum, are proud to sponsor Preservation.
The only museum dedicated to.
The only museum in the world dedicated to the history of Milwaukee.
Okay, Dad.
I'm not going to double up on the commercial for you, yes.
I hope you fact-check.
To sponsor Pres-, well, and that's Milwaukee with I-E, not E. Is proud to sponsor Preservation Month. May is a celebration of places that have historic meaning to all residents of this great land. This year, they range from opera houses to the Roffey House, a stop on the Underground Railroad, to Chicano Park, a protest site for open community spaces. Milwaukee Historical Society is proud to present Historic Home Tour 2019, Island Station, June 22, 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. This ticketed event marks the celebration of four glorious homes that have been maintained and loved by generations. The homes were all built in the early 20th century as the Island Station neighborhood was a summer home destination for the Portland elite. Fernwood Manor, the rustic-style manor from, has stunning views of the Willamette River from its strategically placed windows and balconies. Initial construction was halted by the Depression and was completed by a hotel owner who named it Fernwood Manor. Locally, it is remembered as the Amadeus Restaurant, but was purchased in 2018 and has been carefully restored to a private residence. The Beatty Residence. This two-story craftsman bungalow is characterized by a low-pitched gable roof with dormers, a large cover porch supported by substantial columns, broad eaves with exposed rafters, and large fix and double-hung windows with multiple panes in the upper windows. Distinctive to this house is the rounded arch in the front gable where the windows were originally screened in for a sleeping porch.
That's right.
Heinz House. The Heinz House, which was built around 1914, was designed for Alfred C. Heinz by Alfred H. Faber, a prolific architect active in Portland between 1904 and 1918. This craftsman bungalow has a cross-gabled roof, allowing for maximum views of Willamette River. Distinctive elements include clinker brick porch piers and a wood blanket, wood blanked front door, sorry. Piddock Cottage. The Piddock Cottage, built in 1916, was constructed as a summer home by the Piddock family, whose financial empire included ownership of the Oregonian. It has few formal stylistic details, but was designed to take advantage of the views of the Willamette River. The front entrance, originally the rear entrance, is protected by an arched portico supported by decorative cast-iron remnants from the Oregon elevator. All right, you won't get away without a commercial. So if you would like to join our tour, which is June 22, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m., tickets are $20 per person, and please contact the museum via email at milwauquimuseum@gmail.com. Thank you, and, Mr. Mayor, may you read the proclamation.
And there's a limited number of tickets, so buy now.
And they will, and they will go fast, so, buy now. And it is all to support the Milwaukee Historical Society.
Whereas the preservation of historic places is an effective tool for revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas since 1973, the National Trust for Historic Preservation and countless other communities across the United States have marked May as an annual time to reflect on the importance of preserving places that reflect America's history. And whereas modern-day Milwaukee situated in the historic homeland of the Clackamas Band is one of the oldest settled communities in Oregon, founded in 1847 and incorporated in 1903, continues to encompass a range of potentially historic buildings, including late pioneer-era structures and exceptional mid-century architecture. And whereas the preservation of historic places has a positive impact on communities by strengthening neighborhoods, encouraging local economic growth, providing a physical link to the past, and by being environmentally responsible. And whereas the Milwaukee Historical Society will host the inaugural Historic Home Tour on June 22, featuring four early 20th century homes in the Island Station neighborhood that have been lovingly preserved and restored by their owners. Now therefore, I, Mark Gamba, mayor of the city of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation in the county of Clackamas in the state of Oregon, to hereby proclaim May 2019 as Preservation Month in Milwaukee to increase public understanding of the importance of preserving our history for future generations.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilor Beatty.
Thank you. I am still hoping that you find out who my home was built for, so that you can put that name on that.
We're getting there, very close. Well, now that Linda bailed on us, I'm trying to, she knows she probably is going to be our best connection.
Oh, okay, good.
But she used to babysit the Cousins and all sorts of stuff.
Oh, my goodness, okay.
All right. Tonight's consent agenda includes the minutes of the April 9, 2019 special session, the April 9, 2019 study session, the April 16, 2019 work session, and the April 16, 2019 regular session. A resolution acting as the local contract review board authorizing a Microsoft enterprise agreement and purchase of software support services from SHI International Corporation. A resolution acting as the local contract review board authorizing a contract for the 2020 Street Surface Maintenance Program Slurry Seal Project to Blackline Inc. A resolution accepting the recommendation of the Kellogg Good Neighbor Committee to commit up to $90,000 from the Good Neighbor Fund for landscape work along the east and west side of Kellogg Creek Treatment Plant. A motion to approve a 2.75 cost-of-living adjustment for the management and non-represented city staff. And a motion to approve an Oregon Liquor Control Commission application for Milwaukee Cafe and Bottle Shop at 9401 Southeast 32nd Avenue for off-premise sales. Does any member of council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I wish to remove item D, the Kellogg Good Neighbor Committee landscape item. I had some questions, and I discussed with Peter Passarelli before, and we felt it was just better to pull it off and discuss it at a future meeting. There's nothing particularly time-sensitive about it, as I understand it, so I'd like to remove that item from the consent agenda.
Okay, anything else? And I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as written minus item D. Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda minus item D. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None heard? It passes unanimously. Audience participation, this part of the agenda during which council will hear community members' statements regarding city business. Those wishing to speak must fill out a yellow speaker registration card available on the table in the hall and identify agenda item number four, audience participation. As council has other business items on the agenda this evening, speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Because the information provided during public comment may be new to some councilors, the city manager will respond at the next council meeting to those comments that require follow-up. Before we begin, are there any follow-up reports from the May 7, 2019 audience participation, Ms. Ober?
There are not any follow-ups to that meeting, but I did want to let you know that we heard from the Healthy Democracy Group that they got the grant for the council compensation discussion. So they will be coming in at the end of June. Because of how late the grant came in, we won't be able to do, if there's any ballot component to their decision, we won't be able to get it onto the ballot by the August 13 deadline because of how far the grant pushed it. So we're going to be coming back to you with probably closer to a fall process that then could go on to a May discussion if we needed it, but he will, Lynn will be presenting to you in late June.
Cool, thank you. All right, I have two cards currently.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to change it to 6D.
Okay. All right, then I have one card, Chris Ortolano.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, city staff, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Dogwood Day.
Thank you, happy Dogwood Day.
As a member of our community for over 20 years, As a member of our community for over 20 years, I've been blessed with the ability to participate in the Neighborhood District Association. I'm a resident of Hector Campbell. My address is 11088 Southeast 45th. Twenty years ago, I was the vice chair. A week ago, I was elected again to the vice chair of our Neighborhood District Association. But I come not to speak to neighborhood concerns, more to a city concern. I am not here to voice an opinion, but merely to state a fact that is available on the city's website with regards to a public hearing that's taking place next Tuesday at this time in these chambers. The intention is to let other members of our community become aware of this public hearing because very few have been notified. With your permission, Councilor Mayor, I would simply like to state the date and the time and the purpose of that hearing. So the purpose of the hearing, the Public Planning Commission will be reviewing a variance request with regards to height recommendations on the parcel known as the McFarland site, which is now subject to residential development, and as of this afternoon, the packet does state that there are 234 units that are proposed to be developed on that site. This is the site that is behind the Milwaukee marketplace. And I would just like to state that if anybody has any questions or concerns, that they should be aware that public hearing will take place here starting at 6:30 p.m. on Tuesday, February 20- pardon me, May 28th. And I want to thank everybody for allowing the neighborhood and myself as an individual to participate in the public hearing process.
Excellent, thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. Good to see you.
All right, any others? Nope, seeing none. Item five, the public hearing, the annexation of the Charragino Farms at 4900 Southeast Lake Road and adoption of adjusted tax rates for annexed properties, File A-2019-001 in Ordinance and Resolution. This will be introduced by our planning director, Danny Egner.
Tonight, we're asking you to make- approve three different requests. One is the adoption of the ordinance annexing the property. The second is a resolution that will set a special tax rate for the property for 10 years, and the third is to direct staff to initiate annexation of the adjoining right-of-way. The action to annex will involve the annexation of a 55-lot new subdivision that's been approved through the county, and it is very, very close to being actually recorded by the county. It has not yet been recorded. The property is a 15-acre site located southeast of the Kuhn and Lake Road intersections, for the audience. The process we're following tonight is an expedited annexation for this process. That is a process that allows the council to respond to a request for annexation made by the property owner, and the expedited annexation tonight does not include the right-of-way adjacent to the property. It leaves out Lake Road and Kuhn Road, which need to be processed through a non-expedited process, so that's the distinction there. So we're going to come back to you with that annexation of the roadway before the end of the summer. The staff report and findings that are in your staff- that are in the staff report address all of the required state metro and local criteria for annexation. And then, as you are aware, a few weeks ago, after a roughly 18-month process, we reached an agreement with the developer so that they would initiate the annexation process and sign an annexation agreement and sign the annexation application. Part of that involved providing some different incentives for the- for development of this property, since the city was not in a position to provide water and sewer, they were both being provided by special districts. The resolution that's involved sets the special tax rate that we would be providing and directs the Finance Department to notify the county assessor on an annual basis of the tax rate that would apply to this property. And there's a waiver for three years and then a phased-in period of taxes for seven years. And finally, the final thing again was a separate motion to initiate the annexation of the roadway. There's a couple different ways. One can initiate annexation, a property owner can petition, there can be a vote, or the council can initiate the annexation on its own motion, and that's what we're asking the council to do with this- with this request. So that's what I've got for a report. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
We've been through, discussed it a couple times already.
This has been a long, ongoing process. I think we're all pretty much up to speed on this one.
Never thought we would be here, actually.
I didn't think we'd be here this soon after the last- I was pleasantly surprised by how quick this all came together, so.
All right, so if there are no questions, then, audience testimony, does anyone wish to comment on the proposed annexation and tax rates? Nobody? Then I will skip that part. Next to, is there council discussion?
Well, I think it's a good thing for the city. I think we all, you know, might have some quibbles with the terms under which it's happening, but it's a good move for the city to have this become part of the city.
Certainly is. It's the ultimate good outcome.
Yeah.
I think it's as good as could be hoped for in light of the county's-
Yeah.
-unwillingness to cause areas that are contiguous to our city and within our urban management area to actually annex before they're allowed to be developed. But that's a work in progress. So.
Would you like a motion?
Sure, I'd love a motion.
I move for the first and second readings by title only, an adoption of the ordinance annexing the Charragino Farms subdivision into the city limits of the city of Milwaukee, File Number ZA-2019-001.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded for the first and second readings by title only and adoption of the ordinance annexing the Charragino Farms subdivision into the city limits of the city of Milwaukee, File Number ZA-2019-001. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None heard, it passes unanimously. Ms. Ober, would you please read the ordinance twice by title only?
An ordinance of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon, annexing the Charragino Farms subdivision into the city limits of the city of Milwaukee, File A-2019-001. And again, an ordinance of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon, annexing the Charragino Farms subdivision into the city limits of the city of Milwaukee, File Number A-2019-001.
Mr. Stauffer, would you please poll the council?
Council President Faulkner?
Aye.
Counselor Beatty?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Aye.
Counselor Heisey?
Aye.
Mayor Gamba?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0, Ordinance 2171.
Before we pass this, I would like to take a moment to thank Danny. He has put an exceptional amount of time and effort. This has been quite a lift, and I really appreciate all the efforts that he did put into it, also to our city attorney for his extra time and effort on this one. It was a big lift.
I will say, Danny didn't have a beard or any gray hair before.
Is he even talking about retirement at that point?
Yeah.
I'm impressed he has any hair left.
Thank you for recognizing that. I have to comment. The developer, in one of my meetings with the developer, he said, "You sure are persistent."
Oh, the irony.
All right, and we will need a second motion on this one for the tax portion of the-
And so, I'll move to approve the resolution establishing a special city tax incentive for the annexation of the Charragino Farms subdivision.
I'll second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve the resolution establishing a special city tax incentive for annexation of the Charragino Farms subdivision. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None heard, it also passes unanimously. And lastly, we need another motion.
I'd move to direct city staff to initiate the annexation of the rights-of-way of the portions of Lake Road and Kuhn Road that abut the Charragino Farms subdivision and the portions of Lake Road west to the current city limits.
I second.
It has been moved and seconded to direct city staff to initiate the annexation of the rights-of-way for the portions of Lake Road and Kuhn Road that abut the Charragino Farms subdivision and the portion of Lake Road west to the current city limits. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None heard, it passes unanimously. Yay.
Yay. Woo-hoo.
And we're only eight minutes behind schedule now.
We were 20.
And that-
I know, this is good.
I was gonna say, that was all Greg, all eight, every eight minute, every minute of that eight.
Moving it, moving it, moving it.
All right. Our next item is amendments to the Milwaukee Municipal Code, Chapter 8.16, Security Alarm Systems and Ordinance. This will be introduced by our police record supervisor, Shannon Coyle, and the chief.
Good evening, Chief Luke Straight, and Shannon Coyle has definitely done all the work on this project, so I'm gonna let her explain it.
Good evening. I am here today to talk about the ordinance change for the alarm program. It's mostly language updates. It hasn't been updated since 1984, so it needed a little bit of revision for language change. One of the major changes that is being proposed, which you know about, is the amount of false alarm calls that are allowed before a charge starts to occur. And then, the other major change is the revocation process. I think there was proposed language in there for you to-
Optional language.
Optional language. So.
If you want it.
Yeah.
And it is not- I'm fine without it, but I think it was really just a question of, do you guys want to be the hearing officers for when there's an appeal from a permit that's been-
Skip right over that one, as opposed to-
Right now, it comes to you. So if you guys want to, you can- I don't think we've had any of these. Have we ever brought one? We've never brought one to council. This is old language. But in past practice, over the last couple of years, when it has been an administrative function where you all don't really have a whole lot of interest in being the hearing officers, I've offered to take it if you want it. So we made that option. It's not in your resolution today, it is in the staff report, and we do have it prepared for you if you want to adopt that version.
So the staff report has us still continuing to be?
Actually, in the staff report, I believe I included language that said it would be amended to this if you wanted to be the city manager who is the board or is the recipient of the appeal.
Okay.
Would we incorporate that into a motion tonight?
Yeah. And I would just say you would adopt the languages included in the staff report as amended.
It would be the, what's in your script plus you can make a reference to the language in the staff report. And we could- staff, somebody would want to read that language into the record, but that's all stuff we've done before and pretty straightforward, so. It's on page RS91, the alternate language.
All right, so.
And lastly, I feel that these changes would be best to serve the residents of Milwaukee. And that's it. If you have any questions, just let me know.
No questions, pretty straightforward.
Did you say you haven't had any appeals of this? Really? Interesting, okay.
The old program's been very hard to accurately track, so hopefully, once the new program goes live, then it'll be.
Then there'll be all kinds of appeals. We definitely want to give it to them.
If you want them on your council agenda, we can include them.
I'll have to do them a different night.
Well, I think there's a real argument for not having council do it in that, I don't know, it's just kind of private and I don't-
Yeah.
It feels like airing dirty laundry unnecessarily. I would rather have residents not have to be on camera talking about this sort of thing if we do start getting some of these coming in.
So have the city manager do it.
Happy to.
Thank you.
Then I would entertain a motion.
Do we need to then, maybe we need to read the language before we make the motion so that we can just say?
Sure.
That's probably the cleanest.
I can read it if nobody objects. Okay. So the revised language, it's everything that's the same in the ordinance, but section, Chapter 8.16.050 Revocation Procedure, Section B, we'll read. "If no report is submitted, or if the chief finds that the action taken will not prevent further false alarms, the chief will give written notice that the permit will be revoked on the 10th day after the date of the notice. The alarm user has 10 days to request an appeal of the police chief's decision to the city manager. The appeal may be submitted to the city recorder." Section C would read, "If an appeal is submitted, the city manager will meet with the request or as soon as feasible."
So I'll move for the first and second readings by title only, an adoption of the ordinance amending Milwaukee Municipal Code, MMC, Chapter 8.16, Security Alarm Systems, amended to include the language read into the record by staff.
I'll second.
Has been moved for first and second readings by title only, an adoption of the ordinance amending Milwaukee Municipal Code, MMC, Chapter 8.16, Security Alarm Systems, amended to include the language read into the record by our city recorder. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None heard, it passes unanimously. Great work, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Well, we have some formality still.
Okay, yay. So, Ms. Ober, if you'd like to read it twice.
An ordinance of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon, amending Milwaukee Municipal Code, Chapter 8.16, Security Alarm Systems, as amended by staff. And an ordinance of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon, amending Milwaukee Municipal Code, MMC, Chapter 8.16, Security Alarm Systems, as amended by staff.
Mr. Stauffer?
Council President Faulkner?
Aye.
Counselor Beatty?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Aye.
Counselor Heisey?
Aye.
Mayor Gamba?
Aye.
Motion carried 5-0, Ordinance 2172.
And I want to also congratulate Shannon, because this is the first time she has put a staff report through. She survived. Well done.
Yeah.
And thanks to Tim Sawyers, who helped. So thank you all.
Well, reading this, or hearing that it's 35 years old, brought to mind former counselor Abma, who complained constantly about how old some of our codes were, so he's a- he's on vacation at the moment in Japan, but I'm sure he'd be happy to hear we replaced one of our ancient codes.
I'm sure he's watching.
Yeah, sure, sure he is.
Dreaming it, right?
Hear you and a therefore out of it.
Oh, did you? Yeah. There unto, yeah.
Thanks, you guys, have a great night.
Thanks.
Thanks. All right, our next item is the Comprehensive Plan Housing Policies Discussion, a joint session with the Planning Commission, which is going to be introduced by the senior planner, David Levitan.
We need to take a break. Five to get the tables set up.
Absolutely. We will recess for five minutes. We will recess for five minutes. It will be led by senior planner David Levitan, but before we get started, we will have public testimony from Ed Zemwalt on this topic. So take it away, Ed.
Okay, it's a very, very tough problem you guys are tackling. You're gonna have to forgive this, it's the way it's gonna be. This little city, what is it, how many square miles? 20,000 people? Is taking on a really big one. And I'm not sure we need another fight right now. All this stuff that's going on, I'm very worried about the infrastructure. The streets, sidewalks, schools, police, fire, sewage treatment plants you wrote about a couple of months ago. Everything. And all these pressures will be brought about. When you talk about infill in established neighborhoods, it's very troubling and very, very multifaceted. And there's a lot of thinking that's gotta go into this. Right now, our city looks like it was hit by a bomb. There's all this going on. And we don't even know how the city now, excuse me, is going to be able to handle this massive blow to its infrastructure on the south end of town. The parking, the traffic, and I've got a lot more I could talk to you about traffic at another time. But I'm not sure that people are ready for the established neighborhoods to be invaded yet. There's enough parking in the neighborhood streets. Wow. It's getting out of hand now. Before light rail, we used to have a lot of people from dark hours parking in the neighborhoods up on 28th, 29th. I'm afraid you're gonna run into that again. But I think you've always gotta keep your eye on the infrastructure. And our schools right now are so fragile. Bring a lot more people in and stress them out, there's stress at every level. And I'm not saying, no, we can't take this on, but boy, someone had better tread very softly, because this is important to the growth. We don't know what's gonna happen. You know, I was reading something the other day. An urban growth boundary is like an albatross, and it keeps feeding on itself and feeding on itself. Pretty soon, the wings won't hold it up anymore, and you've got one heck of a crash. And if you start feeding these neighborhoods, the established neighborhoods, wow. I don't know. I do know there's still something to be said about the American dream, too. Young couples, they fight their way through their marriage and the start of their family. While they wanna get out of that apartment. Fence front yard, gardening back, maybe a patio. They don't have to listen to Screamin' Smiths next door fighting in their apartment. All these things enter into it. And I know I'm not telling you, I know you're an intelligent guy, and I'm sure these people are, but it is such a big issue, and I'm not sure that little Milwaukee should be taking this on for the whole nation or the whole state. I don't think we should set that example. We shouldn't cringe, but we shouldn't stick our neck out either. We have got enough to do to develop this city right where it is. I'm not trying to throw fear at this, because I really care about this town, but I don't wanna see a ghetto. Do you know that Selwood used to be one of the greatest neighborhoods in Portland? And I spent a lot of time there. It wasn't far removed from the immigration experience. The Germans and the Irish and the fighters, there's a lot of great people out there. Selwood was a big ethnic, ethnically mixed family. It was really a great place. Now, it ain't so much. You go over there and you see buildings that are under construction, air sprayed on it, three stories is enough. Look at that place. I'd hate to see everything turn that way. Is that the future of the boundary? Everything squeezed in and up? I hate that. You gotta think about this. Livability, this is what caused 25 years of stress and fighting in this town. Forced density against livability. There's a way to develop the town, and ramming everyone in the boundary is not the way.
Okay, thanks, Ed. You're a couple of minutes over time already. Thanks.
Thank you.
All righty then. David.
All right, thank you, mayor, counselors, commissioners, David Levitan, senior planner. And I am here tonight to talk about our Comprehensive Plan Housing Policies and to get input from both the city council and the planning commission on them. I'm gonna try to keep it pretty brief so we can actually get in and get your, any specific comments. We're not trying to wordsmith the policies, we're basically trying to establish areas where we think we're missing or where, areas where we need to modify policies. I am just gonna start with a kind of brief overview of the process that has led to the development of the current draft that's included as attachment for the meeting packet. So, basically, what's driven a lot of this process is our Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee. It's a group of very dedicated individuals that have been willing, especially over the last few months, to meet multiple times per week to tackle what Ed has pointed out is a very important and difficult issue to address. So far, the CPAC has held four meetings related to the housing policies. As a reminder, the housing block was broken off from Blocks 2 and Block 3, given the importance of the topic and given the importance of the issues related to housing, and so we've spent a lot of extra time kind of working on these issues and trying to engage the public and try to establish what community priorities are as far as balancing all the things, you know, related to sustainability and equity and affordability and livability, all of these things that at times can seem to be in conflict, but we're trying to find kind of that perfect blend as far as how we can address our housing needs in a way that maintains, you know, what people love about Milwaukee while offering additional opportunities for new residents. So we currently actually have, our fifth meeting of the CPAC is scheduled for this Thursday, so we're looking to get some feedback from the planning commission and the city council that we can take back to the CPAC on Thursday night. They will be considering, they haven't seen this current draft of the policies either, so they're gonna be reviewing those policies as well, and we would love to provide them with kind of initial thoughts from the planning commission and council. So just a little bit as far as additional feedback, additional public outreach that we've done in addition to the CPAC meetings. We've had work sessions with both the planning commission and the city council back at the end of March and early April. That was leading up to our town hall, which happened on April 18th. That town hall really focused on, there were two components to it. There was an introduction, kind of framing the issues, and then the, kind of the two exercises that occurred. There was a group exercise, a basically small group discussions, where we asked people to weigh in on potential additional housing options that, you know, the city should consider in three different parts of the city. We broke it out into kind of what we called the centers, which was downtown and central Milwaukee, and then the northern part of the North Milwaukee Innovation Area, the area around the Tacoma Street Station. We, the second area was kind of the hubs and corridor approach, so it was areas along transit lines, along areas like King and 32nd, and then around the proposed neighborhood hubs that we've been discussing and engaging with the neighborhoods over the last year. And then the third option was what we called the dispersed option. That was kind of everything else that wasn't a hub or corridor or center area, so those are predominantly detached, single-family residential neighborhoods that are currently zoned, primarily R7, that being the dominant zoning district in the city, R10, and then some R5 as well. Kind of based on that exercise, we also, at the end of that, we asked people to fill out a survey which kind of got to some of their priorities related to the four lenses of equity, affordability, sustainability, and livability. We then replicated that, those survey questions in our online open house, which I'm gonna talk about next. But in general, you know, there were definitely a lot of different opinions in the room that night at the town hall. There was a lot of support for, you know, broadening the types of development that could occur throughout the city. We tried not to be too prescriptive, we tried to keep it in pretty generalized areas. We didn't want people getting into, I would like to see this in this specific location. We were trying to take it from kind of a larger, kind of 30,000-foot level as far as what are some potential ways that we can get to issues such as equity and affordability and opening up additional opportunities for people within the context of a city that's historically been traditionally single-family residential. A little bit just on the online open house, which opened the week following the town hall. It was open for two weeks from the end of April into early May. We had 328 unique visitors to the online open house and about 8,200 active participants that went through all of the individual questions that asked them about housing types that they would support in different areas of the city, and then also got to those survey questions related to the four lenses. You know, as was to be expected, there were a lot of different opinions. You know, if you look at, you know, really what, you know, when, a lot of our discussion, you know, in recent months, and I think that people have really latched on to is this idea of kind of a middle housing options and offering additional middle housing options throughout different parts of the city. The highest level of support for those middle housing options, which would be duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, row houses, cottage cluster developments, was along our hubs and corridors. And if you look at, you know, when you look at the opportunities within the dispersed areas, the primarily R7 and R10 areas, there was actually a majority of respondents that were opposed to triplexes, fourplexes, and row houses within these areas. So people definitely had their opinions, and that was really the intent of the open house and of the town hall, was to get this initial feedback. So as we move forward with this process and we consider all of the different objectives and all of the different city priorities, you know, this wasn't a scientific or statistically valid survey, it was a pretty small, you know, pretty small sample of people, but we did want to offer that, you know, opportunity for people to comment pretty early on in the process. We didn't wanna get to, you know, potential development code amendments, you know, in late 2019 or early 2020 and have people, you know, tell us, hey, we haven't really discussed this at all. So in addition, you know, there was a pretty sizable portion that just seemed opposed to kind of anything, even things like accessory dwelling units and duplexes, which were already allowed within all of our dispersed options, within the R7 and R10 zones. People, you know, were strongly disapproved of those even within the dispersed options. So there is, you know, a sizable component of the community, at least of the respondents to the survey, to the online open house, that, you know, don't want to see a whole lot of change within Milwaukee.
I think now's a good time to point to the report, and I really appreciate that you're including this in your reports. I mean, you've done this before, and I just think it's... The figure three on RS 136 points to one of the biggest indicators that suggests that you're right, these are not representative samples, both in numbers and also demographics. You know, I think it's really important to recognize that the income distribution on the survey respondents is very heavily skewed to probably the income level that makes up about 15% of Milwaukee residents. We know that the area median income here is $57,000, certainly not $75,000 to $150,000 a year. We also know that they, that the participants skew in ways that are not representative of our city in other ways as well, and I think, I'm not gonna let this go unmentioned, because it's been weighing heavily on me for the last several minutes. It doesn't come as a great surprise to me when the comments, and I want to make sure that the minutes reflect that Mr. Zemwalt refers to an invasion of our neighborhoods, turning it into a ghetto. Because often, when I go back to try to look at the research and look back at minutes on when decisions are being made in this city, and I'm talking about, you know, decades ago, you read through the minutes, and we tend to be very generous in the way that we refer to comments being made in these discussions. That's not very welcoming language to use when we're talking about the comments and questions and concerns and phone calls and emails that I get from residents who are being pushed out of Milwaukee right now. And to being a welcoming place for newcomers from lots of different backgrounds, I think it's really, really, really important to recognize that the folks in this room don't necessarily represent the demographics of our city, and sometimes the language that we use is not very welcoming to make that change. So I thought that was an important point in your presentation, David. I'm sorry for interrupting and taking us maybe a little bit off track, but I think it's important to recognize that when we talk about these percentages, 40% of respondents are opposed to any housing types, 54% to 50% are opposed to any type of middle housing, which didn't used to be illegal in this town just 70 years ago. I think it's important that we recognize that we are not hearing from a representative sample. So thank you for including that information. I think it's really, really important that we continue to keep an eye on that. We continue to get better at it, because we're not always bad at it. We do good, we, sometimes we really do get it right, and I want to make sure that we are constantly keeping our eye on that target of doing better, and I think we can do better. So thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Thank you, councillor. So yeah, moving on to the actual policies, which, as I mentioned, are included in attachment four. They're currently organized around four goals, the four goals being around the four lenses that we've been applying. Those are equity, affordability, livability, and sustainability. And then under those four goals, we have a total of 28 policies. You know, we've tried to focus on capturing as much of the varied public input and varied community priorities that have been expressed, you know, things that have been expressed within our community vision. You know, there's been a huge focus on housing over the last few years, and so trying to kind of crystallize all of that into even a pretty hearty set of 28 policies. It's on the higher end as far as the, the number of policies. But, you know, we, I think the CPAC, working with staff and getting input from the planning commission and city council, we've really tried to reflect, you know, as much of the city's priorities as possible. And so what we are looking for tonight from the council and from the commission is basically kind of to look through them and let us know what your thoughts are as we move forward and considering them. Where are there areas where we need to be either adding or deleting or modifying language? Are there places where we've just completely missed topics that need to be addressed? We obviously haven't touched our comprehensive plan in a long time, about 30 years. And so we want to get as much input and reflect as much of the community's priorities as possible. And then I actually, yeah, I guess, you know, one of the major issues and, you know, what's come up, both in Mr. Zemwold's testimony and what a lot of people are really focusing on is, and that's being discussed at the statewide level with the proposed House Bill 2001, is these expanded housing options within single-family neighborhoods. And so we have two policies that really touch on that directly, one under the equity section, equity policy one, and then one under the affordability section, I think also affordability policy one. And so we really, you know, we would love to get as, as many thoughts on that as possible as far as have we struck the right balance, as far as not getting too prescriptive on those. You know, it's been a push and pull with the CPAC as far as I'm really wanting to get into specifics and having to provide the right level of flexibility that we aren't, you know, establishing standards or actions within our comprehensive plan that, but that we're still providing the appropriate amount of guidance and that we're still, you know, providing and reflecting the appropriate, you know, and community priorities that have been expressed. And with that, you know, I would ask if anyone would like to start within any particular section. We didn't have really a set plan as far as, you know, how we'd like to do this. We were hoping just to have a, a nice, organic conversation. I would also point out that I have Matt Hapie here, who helped us out and is helping us out with the comprehensive plan. So if there are any policies that you absolutely hate, he probably wrote them.
The best ones, David, or maybe Danny. I don't know.
David, do you have the ability to put them on the screen?
I do, in...
We don't, we don't have a device. The planning commission doesn't have them in front of us.
I just asked Justin to grab copies, but we can still get them up on the screen.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think that helps focus the conversation.
Yeah.
Can I just say one thing from the, because I look at this as a totally different than I think everybody else does. And I look at it from a business sense, and what you really have in this city is you have an undercapacity that is limiting your revenue. So what I mean by that is, is that you have two real constraints on the city, or two real constraints on housing, and that is the amount of land you have and really the, the sewer treatment plant is your two really biggest constraints. And the only reason why the sewer treatment plant is, is because it's really expensive to connect into another section, so. But you have something along the lines that we, you know, 3,600 BTUs in dry time. And so one thing that I think we really need to be careful of is understanding what those constraints are. And once we get to whatever that 1,000 units away from BTUs, we really need to review our, our policy to be able to either slow it down or come up with a plan to reconnect the new housing to the sewer system. Where your revenue falls short is, is that you need, you have, you're undercapaciting your amount of tax revenue because, you know, but you're still constrained by what you can do, you know? It's like if, if I owned a manufacturing plant, I could produce 1,000 widgets, but I only produce 750. But for me to produce 1,100, I have to build a whole new line, so it's a whole new game. So that's the way I look at it. So I would like something in here that at least gives us a chance when we hit constraint points and before we hit a major constraint point, that, you know, that we automatically relook at the policy. We know that we have 1,200 units already in the queue, which, you know, takes up a bunch of capacity already. And so instead of destroying our wastewater system and just watching all these big environmental problems happen because we're not prepared ahead of time, that's what I would like to see in this policy as an overall general.
So I want to slightly correct one of the things you said there. The capacity of that plant is, it's, it's close to its capacity. However, Milwaukee is not producing most of that capacity. I believe we're producing 30, 35% of that capacity. So most of that is coming from uphill. It's coming from Happy Valley and Incorporated. All of that, I believe, or most of it, at the very least, could be diverted through the system that's in place down to Tri-City. So I don't believe our plant is actually a constraint for a good, long time or very many houses. Other things may be more constraining, sewer mains and things like that, depending on the streets, more easily replaced, obviously, than an entire sewage treatment plant. But I don't...
But the problem is this...
Not exactly what we were told by, at the CPAC. I mean, some amount of that can be diverted, but it's not clear that all of that can be diverted.
It's a pretty big amount.
Instead of forcing an environmental disaster, why don't you just put in a trigger mechanism that says, hey, you know what, you're 1,000 units away, let's relook at it because now we need to talk to Happy Valley, or now we need to talk to the uphill people and try to change the system.
That's not us. We don't need to have that conversation. We contract with Wes to take care of that problem for us.
Okay.
So I hear what you're, I hear your concern, and I hear the concern that it's an environmental disaster waiting to happen. I'm new to this, so I could have it wrong, but my understanding is that Wes provides those services, that they are on top of it, that they are doing a ton of improvements at the Kellogg Treatment Plant that will increase its capacity, that they are looking ahead 15, 20 years. They know they've got to deal with Happy Valley, which, I mean, we will never achieve the level of development that, that they are because they're just rolling out houses like they were made...
They have land.
Out of cookie cutters. Yeah, and they're adding land. So that's there. We also have system development charges that new developments do pay, and part of what people are paying for is developing new sewer and stormwater capacity. So it's not ignored.
I think the constraints discussion is one that has been short-circuited or not enough explored in this whole process, and we haven't even talked about streets as constraints and road and traffic as constraints, although that is a concern that was expressed a lot at the town hall. And I think the thing I really want people to keep in mind is, whatever we do when it gets to the code writing, not so much the comp plan writing, but when, when it gets to the code writing, whatever we do in terms of expanding ability to develop, we can't really roll back, right? Unless, I mean, if you, if you say any lot can develop up to four houses, first off, we've never had the real discussion about what that means in terms of driving up property values, but Alma shared some, some articles about how that does drive up property values, and so it takes tools away from you in terms of land banking and stuff. But we haven't had that discussion. I feel like we haven't had the work sessions on some of these things that we really need to have. We're not, we're kind of going in and these all look like nice policies and they're what people discuss, but we haven't done our homework. And one of the things that bothers me is if we expand it, we can't really roll it back. It's a taking. It becomes a taking for the next city council in 20 years that says, what the heck, you know, we're, we're, you know, we've got whatever the constraint is, whether it's sewer, whether it's roads, whatever it is, whether it's schools, we heard some comment about schools, we can't take, we can't roll it back. And so I think we have to think incrementally. And I, and one, another thing I had asked staff that I'd like to talk about at some point, and I don't know if it's here or if it's a CPAC, is I heard that Gresham did something where they allowed more density, but for a finite period of time. And it's kind of like what we did with our vertical housing credit. We wanted to encourage development, and so we said, for 10 years, you can do this. And it's my understanding that Gresham did something like that in terms of, of allowing more density, more infill density. So I mean, that's another thing we haven't really studied. So I feel like there's a lot of groundwork we haven't really done for these policies.
If I can just touch on the, the infrastructure issue especially, it's actually pretty good timing that the Public Works Department led by, led by Peter, that we're going to be updating our, our master plans for wastewater and for water, and as part of that, we're going to be basically doing kind of some scenario planning and, you know, looking at potential growth options. So specifically addressing issues related to wastewater infrastructure and water infrastructure, you know, as far as how growth might happen throughout the city. And so I think that's one way for us to address those issues. I think, you know, we're establishing housing policies that are relatively high level. There's going to be a lot of work at the development code stage when we're actually proposing, you know, potential, any potential changes to the zoning ordinance. That's a whole different issue where we're going to need to get into the actual specifics and dealing with density and how many units you're allowing per site. So by then, you know, we're going to have some additional information as far as what some of our infrastructure constraints are. And so I think there, you know, we're going to continue to have those discussions. And, you know, we really do need to have those discussions, and we're also updating our, you know, our public facilities section and looking at the issues related to environmental quality. And so a lot, there's a huge intersect between all of these issues, you know, that we're talking about now and that we'll need to continue to talk about as we get into, you know, any code amendments.
I think it's important also, I mean, I appreciate the, the sort of, the, the policy language in that it isn't too prescriptive. I mean, you know, you just look at Equitable, number one, provide opportunity for a range of middle housing types in residential neighborhoods of the city by allowing a variety of, and it goes on. That doesn't say, require that every lot allow four units, and for good reason, right? We haven't had all of those conversations, and we will. I, I was, I was generally very pleased with a lot of the language and how it was, you know, you said you didn't want to wordsmith too much, but I think you're in the right direction, on the right direction in terms of making sure that it's, it's, it's capturing, you know, sort of the, the conversations we've been having together and also being flexible enough that when we do get to that code, we won't have to, we won't have to turn anything back in the policies. I mean, that to me is exactly what a comp plan, what comp plan language should look like. Right now, it's very prescriptive. I mean, you know, we talked about how, you know, it, it requires a specific, you know, numbers of units per acres and all of this other things and, you know, and I, maybe, maybe they did, maybe they didn't do the kinds of studies that you're talking about when they were being that prescriptive. I tend to think not. But I think we're going to have a lot of opportunity to, to, to make sure that we're, I, I don't think, I don't think shooting, you know, really conservatively at this point makes a lot of sense, simply because we don't have all of the language for the code written out because we have more research to do. That seems to me like...
Well, I have no quibble with, you know, like item one. I just think we have to keep in mind that we will have to enact code, and we do need to be looking at them with the idea of, are we overpromising what we don't, what we haven't educated ourselves yet on as, in terms of the implications and the unintended consequences? And I feel like there's just a lot that we haven't educated ourselves on.
And that's my point about the trigger, because it creates proactiveness. It was 30 years before we did that. We already know that we've blown out our estimated growth in 20 years. It's just going to happen again. We can trust other people to take care of the problem for us, or we can be proactive and just do a review. I mean, what's the worst that happens?
Well, I think the, I mean, I think that what's, what's really important to me is that at this, at this stage, you know, we're, if, if what your suggestion is a policy to make sure that we're staying on top of capacity and that there's some language that we can write that, that gets to that, to, you know, but doesn't prescribe a certain, you know, whatever the, I mean, whatever, you know, whatever units you're talking about.
Right.
I don't think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, well, I, I was just, I was using that as probably your number one biggest constraint, you know, because you have to rely on somebody else and another jurisdiction to, to not, right, overflood that, and so that if we're all overflooding it, then we become an environmental hazard. So just to cut that off at the pass, just say, hey, at some point in time, whatever you want to call it, I'm not against the density at all. It's just, you know, making sure that you have a mechanism to say, whoops, we're overcapacity, now what do we do? Because if you say, whoops, now what do you do? Then you have to go out and tax a bunch of citizens to go connect to a different sewer system.
Can I, can I add something? Our, our comprehensive plan process is for a 20-year window, and while we have not done a good job in keeping up with the plan, there hasn't been a whole lot of growth in the last 20 years. So this is our, you know, I think, I think one of the reasons the plan hasn't been updated is just, is because of that. If, if you're in that cycle where there's more pressure for growth, you're going to be forced into a process of updating it more often, and that's your chance to make those types of corrections. As we look at the, as we look at this next 20-year cycle, and one of the things we're doing with the systems plans is we're probably going to look at three growth scenarios. One, similar to what Metro's forecasts were for us, about 1,500 EDU. A second one being about double that, about 3,000 EDU over the 20 years, and a third one being 5,000 EDU. I think there's some logic to each of those. I mean, that right now, we're potentially in the, in the planning cycle, we could use up those entire 1,500. But some of that is assigned to Hillside, which really has a 10-year, potentially a 10-year build-out window. So, you know, how, how many do we use? How quickly? I don't know. 3,000 is probably, you know, a really good kind of marker for what we might expect over that timeframe. 5,000 is the easy capacity to grab from the sewage treatment plant. The, the other potential is what we could divert, what, what you could divert that Happy Valley is using. So, and that's maybe a, that's more than that, more than 5,000. So, you know, that, that's what we're kind of thinking about in terms of scenarios for that effort. The, and they're probably good markers for us as we move forward as well. Part of what we have to do is we have to coordinate our growth forecasts with Metro and PSU and the county. So we can't be out there too far, you know? We can't say for the next 20 years, we're planning for 5,000, 5,000 new EDU. That's not going to match up with anybody else, anybody else's forecast. So, I don't know, just kind of trying to, trying to put our arms around this in a way that I think it, it makes sense. So looking at these policies as guidance, so when we get to the code, when we get to whatever plan, actual land use plan amendments we want to make, are these the policies that help us get there regardless of how much? help us get there regardless of how much in each one of those areas we need to grow? Does that help you? I mean, I want to look them at.
You do have a limited supply of land in your, in your city and in your urban growth boundary and your portion of the urban growth boundary, particularly a limited supply of land that's, that either is vacant or has some capacity for additional development. It's not this unlimited supply that's going to all of a sudden kind of blow out your wastewater system capacity. And I don't think it's reasonable to expect that these neighborhoods where you might allow some additional forms of housing are going to all of a sudden completely transform and every lot's going to become a triplex. I mean, I, it just, to me, is not a reasonable scenario. So I think it's, it is important to think about these infrastructure issues, but I think it's also important not to let them kind of keep you from looking at expanding some housing options in these places. And I think, yes, you should keep an eye on things. I think you could certainly have some kind of overarching policy in your comp plan about revisiting policies every certain number of years. That's a good idea. I mean, every comp plan should have a policy like that. But I wouldn't let that keep you from looking at some of these policies and thinking about, does it make sense, again, to expand some of these opportunities, recognizing that expanding opportunities doesn't mean rapid incredible change in these areas. It's, I mean, in places where I have seen cities expand these opportunities, yes, there is some change, but it's not, it's, it's a percentage of change. It's not a wholesale change to those neighborhoods. And I just think it's important to kind of recognize that and put it in a certain context. So yes, think about the infrastructure issues. Don't do something if you think it's going to completely wipe out your capacity, but at the same time, put it in the context of what the actual capacity is in terms of the land capacity. So those are my thoughts about some of the things.
Can we hear from Kim before?
Yeah, Kim's been.
Sorry, I was trying to break in. Thank you for noticing that. We, so at the last CPAC meeting, Commissioner Edge suggested that we have some form of measurement and the ability to see if we're getting the outcomes that we think we're going to get with this set of, of policies. And it didn't make it in here. And I actually emailed and, and supported his concept as well. So I'm not sure if there's a reason that, that wasn't added or if it was just an oversight. I know it's not required in comp plans to have.
Probably we just couldn't figure out how to.
How to do it? Okay. But I think it's a really, I would be, I mean, it's a forward-thinking way to do this, do planning, because DLCD doesn't require that you have this measurement. And I think it would be, it's really important to see if you're getting the outcomes that you hope or intend to do with these policies and double checking. And it's a good accountability measure to see what's being produced as well and, and showing the public what's being produced. Because I think so often, people, there's a housing crisis and people don't see that there are things happening. And so if you, if you build in a measurement process, then it is able, you're able to educate the public and educate leaders on what, what we're getting.
Yeah.
Adam, also.
This sounds like what, my place of employment is the Oregon Department of Transportation. We are required to report to our bosses, the Oregon Transportation Commission, on key performance measures. There's about four of them. I can't recite them off my head right now. One of them is, is about equity in hiring and consulting out with contractors. But there, there's an analog there because what, what they do is they are setting these performance goals. And this is actually happening in transportation system planning work everywhere. Washington County has a whole host of performance measures. You can, we can adopt a range of performance measures that can, what that does is it confers the responsibility of the city to monitor, just as in the, our sustainability. We actually have, I think that's a good working example of metrics that we are actually going to iteratively measure ourselves against. So in the comp plan process, I don't know that we have to adopt every single one of them. Because it seems to me that at any stage, you, we can take it upon ourselves to adopt a, a range of performance measures as far as the adoption is a resolution that would say, okay, here's how often we are to update, monitor and report out on what we're doing. I'm going to suspect that's what Commissioner Edge is getting at.
So I wonder if there might be an opportunity under sustainability goal for a policy that at least, you know, tells us to, to take, to do those things, sort of maybe trying to mesh somehow.
Well, it started in number five.
Okay.
It just calls out the buildable land inventory, the supply of land, but I think it could be expanded to.
Number five.
Number five under sustainability.
Include the infrastructure.
I believe it's five under sustainability.
I mean, it does, it starts out by saying, prepare, regularly monitor.
All the way down to the.
Yeah.
Sustainability number.
What's the RS number?
RS 162.
Thank you.
They are.
It's the last thing in your packet, I think, yeah.
Yeah. I got it, yep. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree. I thought it was a good idea at the time that he mentioned it. And I think if for nothing else, you know, the folks that are concerned that the city is going to radically change overnight, if we're reporting out the level of change, it's, might give them some peace of mind of, oh, okay, it's not as bad as I thought it was going to be. And it also lets us know is, policy concepts that we are trying to hit, that the things we're, problems we're trying to solve, are we solving those problems or did we miss the mark? Do we need to figure out a different way to solve those problems? So I, I actually think it's really smart.
Well, and I think it's something the, as I understood it, is something that used to be what was expected under the state law on updating your comp plans, where you did a build, you updated your buildable lands inventory every 10 years or whatever. Yeah.
Yeah, and the city did that three.
You know, I know the city did it three years ago, but I mean, we hadn't done it for years before that.
Kind of, yeah, adding to that, that buildable lands inventory requirement where you, that's really just looking at the land.
Right.
And its ability to accommodate your housing needs across a variety of different housing types. This is more tied to, can we actually accommodate that growth? How are we doing as far as, you know, meeting demands and are we, you know, are there improvements that we need to do? Do we need to be slowing things down? Are we, are we hitting our housing needs targets?
And the affordability pieces, I mean, being able to track that on a, on a regular basis, whether that's annually, I don't, I don't know how to calibrate the timing of that. But, and then the other thing really is that housing markets change and, I mean, real estate is ever shifting and there's all kinds of external factors that influence these dynamics.
Correct.
So, you know, being able to keep up on it and, and, you know, notice trends and adapt when things are changing.
I was going to suggest that each section include a goal that is specific to the trigger of that section for, for measuring the, the success of that, that section of goals. So that within each one of these, we can understand how we measure sustainability, how we measure livability, et cetera. And with each one of those added goals, we propose a timeline for when measurements would take place, but they would be specific to each one of those areas.
Would I assume that, I see stuff in here that's probably already in the Climate Action Plan, that we would, that since we've already, we've chosen to adopt that by resolution into the comp plan, that that'll be superseding. But then, as Commissioner Bloesvelt said, that gives us a chance then to work outside of it, but in an analogous way.
Yeah.
I mean, I would say having a, you know, having measures in each, having, you know, yeah, having measures in each of the goals makes sense, but I would certainly keep them all on the, the same timeline. And maybe it's five years or whatever. I mean, I think, you know, in terms of staffing, just simply in terms of the staff workload.
If we do it all on the same schedule.
Right.
That sounds like a nightmare for staff. We would want to stagger things a little perhaps.
I think you'd want to.
I think you're also going to need to think about the data you would use to measure the goals.
Right.
And when, when that data is available. Some data is going to be available, some, some of it, you can look at it, like anytime. You can look at your permit data and see how many, for instance, non-single-family detached homes have been built in a given neighborhood. You can't find out average incomes except when the American Community Survey data comes out. So I think that's part of the reason we hadn't done this, because it's not a super simple, write a sentence kind of task. It's going to take some thinking to come up with a good set of measurements, the right set of timelines and be thoughtful about the data you would use to measure them. So I think great suggestions, but I do think that there's going to be a number of things that make it, that require a certain amount of thought to come up with specific measure circles.
And I'm asking just for a clarifying question from the group so that I understand what we're putting in. Are we looking at measuring whether or not the policies that are currently listed in these four pages have hit the targets as addressed? Because I also heard us talk about the Climate Action Plan. Those are two different measurement strategies. The policy strategies are, are very robust and outside of the comp plan, but I do think that understanding if our goals were met of equity, of sustainability, of these pieces for these policies, it makes a ton of sense. So I'm just trying to make sure that's what we're measuring right, is those policies, did they equate to the, thank you.
Yep.
I think the difficult part is going to be understanding some of these, the nonmetric kind of portions of this. Consider cultural differences and values when implementing development and design standards. How well do you grade yourself on that and who grades you, you know? So.
I actually didn't even understand that one, to be perfectly honest. I mean, when you're talking about a, I mean, when you, when you're talking about working in the, in the constraints of the building code and the health and safety codes and everything else, I'm not sure how much leeway there is for that, really. It didn't make, that did not make a lot of sense to me as a, as a separate goal, you know?
There's some squishiness in it because this is, this is coming out, this is inspired by the vision.
Right.
So intrinsically, we're going to have some weird spots like this. And, and how you connect up a vision to something that is, that you can measure is a really.
Regulate.
And regulate, I mean, in, in something that is fundamentally a land use planning document, that we're stretching in a lot of different directions. I think, I mean, an example that may or may not even exist, you know, allowing for two kitchens in a single-family home, for example, would be a place where you might be considering cultural differences and values when you're making decisions like that in your code. So I think that there are places where setting, you know, development and design standards will require, will, should at least, you know, get us, if we are, if we're abiding by this policy, we should be asking ourselves, are there cultural differences among the residents of Milwaukee that might inform better our decisions around things like that? You know, whether, whether a requirement for, you know, name any number of things, is a barrier for certain types of, of families or households. So that's, that's what that meant to me when I read it. And I, and I know that that's also what it means to a lot of people who talk about that with regard to design standards and.
And this is one of those regions, just that specific one, the cultural piece is one where I feel like this is not the right group of people. We don't have the right people at the table to really be figuring that part out. So.
When it comes to code, I agree with you.
Yeah, yeah.
But in terms of, like, just scrapping it because we don't understand.
Oh, no, no, no. That's not what I mean. That's not what I mean at all. But, but there's that sticking point, you know? I want a $10,000 grant from the Bulleit Foundation to, to do it right, to have some sort of process around that. If anyone from the Bulleit Foundation is listening, just, my number's online.
I think that was more about, you know, making sure that there are opportunities for those extended families in houses and, and to not restrict that through design requirements and other types of things. And it was being careful about what sort of design detail requirements you put, might put in place in a, in a design ordinances so that you're not making every single house look like a bungalow or, or whatever. So it's.
And only serve one type of family.
Yeah. So, you know, so, so I think coming out of that is, is what we need to make sure we focus on are sort of the performance standards such as, you know, things that promote pedestrian orientation rather than being really specific about, you know, a, a front porch with eight-inch wide columns and, you know, there are just things that you can do to be too specific, which we are always driven to do because we are required to have clear and objective standards for the development. And we're trying to make sure we don't hit that common denominator developer, you know? So we, we always sort of over-regulate towards something that we think everybody wants. But.
And we'll still have that. We'll still have that pressure.
If we do that, we need to look at this policy and say.
Are we considering?
Yeah, are we, are we thinking about these cultural differences?
So I'd like to point out, under livability, a couple of things. RS 162. So number two, requiring that new housing projects contribute to the creation of walkable and bike-friendly environment infrastructure connections. I mean, we may find that that requirement adds significant cost to a development that would then, you know, impact the affordability and then the people that can access the housing. So, but we know that this is important overall for the livability of our community. So there's, there's inherent tensions in, in some of these that, that will impact, you know, affordability. And, I mean, you know that and we've talked about that at CPAC as well. And then I'll just point out another thing under livability around, and this is kind of in the thread of the conversation. Number four, I think, Danny, what you were just kind of talking about too, about, okay, the porch has to be this kind of size and it has to meet certain parameters. A little bit concerning about the, you know, this sort of neighborhood compatibility piece and, you know, getting, I guess, getting more of the same that we already have and that I'm not sure that that's exactly what we're trying to do, right?
Internally, we've beat that particular policy all up too. It's changed as we discussed it. And I don't know that it's perfect by any means, but it was the idea that there is some expectation, I think, by, from some members of the community. We've heard, we've heard it expressed that they are fine with density provided it sort of fits the character of the neighborhood. Well, what's that mean? How do you do it? Well, in, in form-based housing, you look at the types of buildings that are in the neighborhood and then you put, put your requirements in place that reflect that form. Well, in Milwaukee, that would be a lot of single-story ranch homes, but our codes allow two, two and a half story, 35-foot tall buildings that are bigger than that. So that's the struggle here. And, and so this is written to say, hey, the code allows these larger envelopes, so we've got that flexibility in the code. So we didn't write that to say, although I think I wrote it that way the first time before David changed it, reflects the surrounding development.
Right, it says housing that is permitted, not that exists.
And I also wanted to, I appreciated that and I also appreciated that what you did in number two is that I thought the word contribute was sort of squishy enough to get me over any kind of concerns I had about that as well. So, you know, contributing to the active transportation network could be that we are requiring, you know, off-street bike parking or covered bike parking or protected bike parking. I felt like, you know, that was a much less of a strong prescriptive, you know, I mean, if we were to say things like, you know, require and then fill in the blank of some sort of really expensive requirement, you know, on a design standard, I would have the same concern about the policy, but I liked that type of, that this is. the same concern about the policy, but I liked that type of, that this is giving you some flexibility in what that means in different circumstances.
We wanted the word connections in there. I mean, that'll also show up in our transportation section, but, but I mean, it's the, one of the things that we don't have in Milwaukee is we've got a lot of dead-end streets, we've got a lot of places where you don't have that connection. Some policy basis to make sure we can get those pedestrian bike connections through if we can't get a street connection through. We, yeah, the planning commission had that experience just recently with a, with a project off of 42nd.
No, we had the same, we had the same problem with the one on King, right? That the only way into or out of that neighborhood was out to King. So if you were walking to someplace in the opposite direction, you were going to walk out to King and then walk a block and a half and then walk back. And it's, I, I, I understand the concern for cost of things, and that's what variances are for, is for the planning commission to be able to give a variance for a good reason that this is, this development here is meant to be low income or workforce income level and that particular thing is going to cost us this much more and therefore drive up the... That's a great reason for the planning commission to say, yes, and we will give you that variance. By the same token, when we have people coming in and they're building 700, 800,000-dollar houses and they're not going to spend the $50,000 to connect that neighborhood to the next neighborhood over, that I have a problem with. So I think the stronger the language can be with the variance possibility.
Well, and it, and the word contribute again. You know, right now, they have to build half-street improvements, really. So saying they have to contribute to infrastructure and connections is less or can be less than they have to build all half-street improvements. It's less than what we're, or it opens the door to being less than what we're currently asking for.
Well, I guess I was also, I was also thinking about our, our Fyllock program when I read that policy too, the fee in lieu of construction. You could, you're, you're still contributing to making those connections by participating in that program. And if we were to right-size that, like we've talked about, then maybe it's less of a barrier.
I was thinking about one other thing recently, and it's around housing choice. And I think that oftentimes we talk a lot about density and then people get really freaked out about that word and what it means. It means stacked apartments and, you know, lots of people. But I think really the idea is that we're adding choice for different types of housing that's smaller and maybe closer together. But it would be nice if we could maybe play that out in, in this language a little bit around adding housing choice that, and that means a lot of different things, means people that want to, you know, downsize into, they want to get out of their aging-in-place and they want to get a smaller unit, or they want to have additional family members living with them, or, you know, it's the choices that we want to allow that will hopefully, hopefully accommodate different types of folks at different places in their, different stages in their life.
Yeah. And I think that is actually what we were trying to say, but we didn't use the word choice, so choices maybe a good word to incorporate in there. We use words like options and types and expand, but I think that's actually where we were trying to go as staff and probably CPAC, at least some CPAC members as well. So it's a good thought.
Yeah. I also have a comment under affordability. All the tables at the town halls talked about homeownership, and it seemed that in the survey was talked about homeownership. We spend a lot of time talking about rental income or keeping rents low or support tiny homes and wheels as affordable housing choice. I like to see something that has, you know, encouraged programs to help first-time homeowners or something along those. I mean, that's the best protection of rising rental rates is to help those people find a permanent home that they can own, that they can build some equity off of.
So to play devil's advocate, programs like...
I don't know, maybe the city can come up with a $1,000 scholarship or a $5,000 scholarship or use some of that CET money for it or, you know?
We've got some, I mean, it's, I think if it, we've got a lot of strategies, you know, around homeownership in our...
New region.
Well, no, I mean, in our own program, in the one...
In the, yeah, housing affordability.
Affordability strategies.
Yeah. And there are partners for that. There are definitely people who work on that, you know, around the, you know, there are potential partners for that. I will say, just when it comes to voting, I'm not for the tiny homes on wheels, and that's going to be a sticking point for me. I think the only way I would support that is if we have a much more robust property maintenance code than we have and more code enforcement than we have. I think that's inviting some code enforcement issues. I'm all for the cottage cluster, you know, let's go down that road, the built tiny homes, but the portable tiny homes, the, you know, the modern version of trailer parks, I'm, I have a lot of concerns about. And I said that at the CPAC, which I know it wasn't, it wasn't very popular there either.
Do tiny homes on wheels, do they actually hook up into the system or do they just work on their own?
Well, that's another issue.
It depends, like, it depends on the city and what you require. And I will just really quickly note that we did actually add language related to enforcement to, under affordability, number seven, the last part of that policy says, "While addressing adequate maintenance of these newer housing types through the city's code enforcement program." So we did hear you and we did include some of that language, you know, based on the discussion we had there.
And I think if, if we are going to go down that route, we have to, and I think they should require hookups, right? Just like a trailer would or, but I think we're going to have to consider, do we then adjust the code also to allow people to have their children living in their... Harvey?
Yeah, no, that's where that gets really tricky.
That's where that goes. That's where that goes.
And it is. And frankly, you know, we, is that worse than having more homeless people?
Yeah. So for instance, just really quickly, because I was actually reading up on this, at least in terms of what the City of Portland does, and every time I say City of Portland in any city that's not Portland, people say, this isn't Portland, but they are right next door. They allow that and they do require, you know, the owner to deal with the...
Sewage hookup.
Sewage hookup, and, but they give them sort of three options. One is to hook up to the primary house, one is to have a tank that gets emptied, and I can't remember what the third one is, but they're one of the cities and the state who does allow that. And they, they provide three options on how you deal with those issues.
And assume we would be able to accommodate, I mean, I assume that we'd also be able to accommodate in the code, you know, composting toilets and gray water treatment systems to maybe allow for the folks that don't necessarily need those extra hookups because not every lot that could potentially, you know, maybe it's a temporary situation, would even have that kind of hookup available to them. So, but those are things that I think that we can address in code and they, I mean, I don't, again, I don't, I just, I think in terms of policy, I mean, you know, supporting the use isn't, isn't necessarily allowing them everywhere under all circumstances without any kind of enforcement or regulations around them.
I think in the city, we definitely want hookups to our sewer system as, as opposed to any kind of system that results in some sort of surface treatment and, yeah.
Right. But a composting toilet doesn't. So I'm saying that there might be places in the code where we can, where we can manage or handle, you know, those exceptions without, without creating an obstacle that can't be overcome.
Yeah. Whatever those standards are for...
Yeah, there's health standards.
Managing composting toilets, yeah. Yeah. You guys can all come to CPAC if you're, if you don't get enough tonight and want to talk some more on Thursday night.
We intentionally only had two of you.
Some of you are supposed to get...
And I just want to provide, I think last time we had this conversation, you know, I was looking for a cost-benefit analysis. And really actually the results of the survey and of the, of the town hall actually kind of provided a lot of it. And I don't want to call it fear, I just want to call it resistance to change. And, and I think that most of the residents that attended it and the town hall and, and did the survey, I think they struggle with the fact that, you know, we love our trees and we love our green spaces and we love this and the, the resistance to change of what density may bring to that, you know, creates a little resistance to what the ideas coming forth are. So I, I don't think that these policies are, are, are bad, and I'm all for adding some density just for the revenue factor. But I think that we definitely heard that, you know, hubs and corridors are where most people like want to see that density. And I don't know how to convince them that density is necessarily bad out into the neighborhoods. So once this, you know, kind of gets out to the public, especially number one in the equity goal, you know, I don't know if it's worth softening it up or if it's worth, you know, trying to explain it a little bit more that you just don't have that resistance because it's, you know, it's not going to change the world around you.
I mean, I think the messaging is obviously going to be very important. I mean, you look at areas of historic Milwaukee that are zoned R2 and R3 that could have a lot of these different housing types already, and they haven't over the last five, 10, 15 years as areas have either been rezoned or that they've had that zoning for a while. These ultimately are the decisions of private property owners. What we're looking to do is, you know, and that Commissioner Travis brought up, you know, is provide that housing choice. It's going to be up to the individual and we are not set on, you know, where appropriate areas for all these different housing choices would be. That's what we want to get through both the comprehensive plan and then in any potential development code amendments. But I think it's going to be important to relay that to people on things related to tree canopy. You know, if we get any sort of private tree, you know, tree ordinance on private property, it's going to apply to whether you do a single-family subdivision or whether you do something that is a duplex or a triplex or a fourplex or a cottage cluster. Those standards are probably going to be, if not exactly the same, very similar. So right now, I mean, you look at a recent subdivision such as King Road where most of the trees went away, you know, who's to say that you couldn't have saved more trees if you, you know, had a cottage cluster?
Or allowed different housing types.
Different housing types. And so those are the conversations, I think, that we want to have and where the messaging is going to be really important, that there are all these different city and community priorities and we're trying to have those discussions and to weigh and balance all of those things, so.
And I did see in the survey results a pretty, it felt to me like there was a lot of resonance with the values that we're trying to represent, even though when you got down into the details of implementation, people got skittish. But the, the need for affordable housing and the desire to provide that was clearly supported from what I saw. Just the interest in all of the different values that form these goals that we've got is there. I think the community is with us in concept. It's in practice where there's some edginess.
Well, and I think the, there was a lot of talk at the tables at the town hall about how do you keep it affordable and, and also just stuff I've been reading on Nextdoor lately about a certain development in town and the, you know, the developers are getting rich and, you know, they're screwing the citizens, blah, blah, blah. I think it would be useful for us to have a joint session like, you know, the planning commission, the city council, and the CPAC on sort of some of these questions about affordability tools and what are, you know, what, what can be done. I mean, that will inform, maybe we don't need that to finish the comp plan, although I'd like to see us do it sooner rather than later. Maybe it can wait till the, till the, you know, code-writing exercise. But I think that conversation would also be useful for a lot of the people that are paying attention to know, you know, what we can and can't do. I mean, I think at the town hall, Denny, as I recall in the intro, made the point that it's not all in our control, and that's certainly the case. But I think it'd be useful, I'd like to know more, and I think it'd be useful for all of us to sort of know more about what the tools are that we can...
I got a report coming your way soon that will actually give you a lot of that information.
Well, I think it'd be good to do it on camera and do it as a talk and have some talking heads.
I'm just saying that you will get more info about it soon.
And the housing affordability strategy includes quite a bit, a lot of ideas too. So, yeah, it's...
I think it's, I mean, I like that idea a lot. I like the idea of having a forum about our housing, you know, housing affordability strategies and specifically answering some of the questions that are coming up. It's a great idea.
Okay.
Maybe that should occur at the same cycle that we're talking about these other measures being measured, if it's every other year or however, whatever that marker is, that you keep some type of public forum involved in reporting back the results of.
I just, I was just, I agree with what you're saying. It just seems like to kind of reduce the level of fear that people may have, reassuring them that there are processes in place currently and that we're evolving out as a, as a result of these forums to check and to provide review and to provide, to, to keep us accountable to these goals. Because I, you know, people may feel like it's just going to be the Wild West and all of a sudden we're just going to have this immense development and density that's going to go unchecked. That's not the case. It's not what's going to happen, but that's just, no matter what you do, that's how people might feel. I was, I was just interested if, I think particularly people may be fearful of densities related to subdivision development and if there's maybe a particular way that we might consider how subdivisions are like, you know, there's one thing about adding a tiny home or an ADU to a given lot and that kind of sprinkles out throughout the city, but subdivisions, I think, are, you know, the highest intensity, the highest impact to our infrastructure, our schools, you know, the list goes on and on. And so I think it may, may be interesting to just have a conversation about what, what's unique about that, that might be a different way in which we approach them or, or monitor them or however they get checked in this process because I would imagine that people are particularly concerned about that. And then I was, sorry. I'm just curious if we might consider levels of incentivizing within the policies as we're kind of rolling them out. I was looking at affordability goal number four, RS 161. Provide opportunity, I love to hear this as an architect, provide opportunities for homeowners to generate long-term rent, income and housing family members through simple, straightforward, cost-effective permitting. So is there a way in which by, you know, implementing or scoring on any particular one of these goals, a development can be incentivized by an expedited permit review or waived fees or, you know, whatever it might be to encourage people to take this on?
So I would definitely encourage you guys to watch our work session that we had earlier tonight with, where we had the presentation and you're, well, I guess you're going to get the same presentation at the end of June about ADUs and cottage clusters because they talked about some of that. Yeah. Yeah.
So Adam, you had?
Well, I really appreciate Councilor Beatty starting and Commissioner Travis and Commissioner Loesvelt talking about this kind of tripartite gathering of CPAC, City Council and Planning Commission. I think we all have this, it's a little bit unspoken, but I think we need to be very frank because, you know, how many hearings we've had in my time here where you're hearing a lot of those fears and these perceptions from people that maybe even be the most, what seems from a city perspective to be very mundane, oh, we're going to punch through a street at some point. But the perceptions around that are pretty troubling in neighborhoods that have for, you know, a few decades been quiet, cul-de-sacs, sort of, you know, felt removed from the grid even a little bit. And how you hear things such as building a sidewalk is going to bring criminal element. So why I get at that is because I go back to, we all got around The Color of Law as a, as a great book to give us some foundational learning and some ways to go forward. But I feel like we still don't really have a sort of an established concept of some, of the exogenous factors behind why we have these housing needs and problems. Because as much as everyone talks on the, everyone reasonably is thinking on the local level and then they'll look to something that they see as the problem, you know, a greedy developer. In fact, in Portland, you'll, you'll hear that talk where there's some sort of, to me, a little bit of obscuring of gentrification as some thing in itself that we have to fight or is gentrification a result of something? Gentrification is a result of institutional decisions and choices. And what happens is a downward pressure effect where developers do what they do based on what incentives they have to work with, what the market gives them, and then they go about and, and develop somewhere. But we look, but people tend to, you know, look at all of that as, no, that's just the developer has bad intent and it's going, it is just a gentrifying effect. So that legacy that we, the legacies we talked to that are very well explained in The Color of Law do have relevance here from a local, regional and even statewide perspective. But if we don't have an ability to kind of have these first principle messages of, you know what, because basically for generations we had de facto gatekeeping because we kept to SFR housing and we were very reluctant as decision makers at all levels to ease that and allow for more choice and we happen to have a legacy of actual redlining, of actual covenants that exclude you based on some sort of ethnicity, race, income level, religion, what have you, that we're never really going to have a sort of common cause kind of dialogue and interplay with our community. We're losing it because we have a great, I love that we did our vision in the way that we did it. And I love that then, you know, led by Mayor Gamba and others, we also threaded that well with our climate action plan and we're threading that well with our comprehensive plan. But all of the while, there are still these unspoken exogenous factors and kind of just this milieu that we don't, we just don't have common understanding around. And so I'm just wondering if there's a way we can come together and talk about, is there some kind of messaging? Is there some sort of, kind of educational program that we could try to undertake to get at these things? You know, to talk about the fact that there are, there were real choices institutionally that were, that we are still dealing with as legacies. And also relating that, you know, it is uncomfortable to talk about that you are going to stick to your property rights and you're going to argue from the cudgel of takings, you know, and what I consider just these kind of gatekeeping elements. And I can't say that you don't have a right to do that, but we could point to saying, you know, let's have, let's recognize some of these principles that we have and actual acknowledgement of legacies that have done harm.
Have you read the open?
So that's really what I'm getting at. I'm just trying to, for us to use our time when we convene together to try and get at these things. Or I feel like we're still going to have some, these intractable elements when we have hearings. I mean, next week's hearing, you know, I think we can all predict how that's going to go. We're going to hear a lot of people who are very uncomfortable with change and there will be plenty of valid reasons. But they're also going to be kind of with this basis of criminal elements coming or we're causing environmental degradation, even though, you know, density and agglomeration of services and people is actually a more sustainable long-term strategy.
Right. Can I ask, I wonder, you know, because, because of the way we've decided to, you know, track these and make this a parallel track and, you know, we're not, you're right, I think we're, we're working so hard on, on the how right now and we haven't even gotten into the why. And if you read, you know, Minneapolis 2040, you know, the sections talk quite a bit about the why. And, you know, maybe it's, we're at a good point to start addressing the why and start to write that part of our comp plan as we're, as we're having these conversations. Because eventually we are going to have, we are, I mean, I would hope, I mean, it will certainly be, you know, my intention to push that, that part of, because it's, I mean, you're comprehen, I mean, it should tell a story, right? It should tell us, it should sort of tell us why we're getting, you know, why we're making these changes, not just how and.
Well, each chapter includes some background and generally they're going to have some technical information, but clearly what you're asking for here is, you know, the why and the values that are behind it. So.
And how do we, how do we get here? I mean, a lot of.
We've got it partly in the, in some of the vision work as well. And we've tried to always tie back to what's in the vision, but it still doesn't go back and tell the story that you're, you're looking for with, with housing. Yeah, I mean, I think we could, we could build something into that, the background section of the housing section.
I guess I.
Sorry. Is that, I mean.
Well, that's very valuable and it's, and it's good and I'm just, I don't have the complete solution of how we are going to really go towards a trajectory of common cause because we have been able to share narrative to our community in such a way that gets at those first principles. I don't have the exact means to do it because frankly, in, in planning and in housing, in land use planning, housing advocacy and any number of advocacy efforts, it's evolved. I mean, we're always trying to figure out how we can do those things better.
Well, and I guess, I mean, we should write something in the comp plan. I'm totally on board with that, but we also shouldn't delude ourselves that the average Milwaukee is reading the comp plan.
It's another opportunity.
Yeah.
That's right.
But I guess listening to what Adam said, I'm wondering is, are you thinking like we ought to have a lecture series, we ought to have a, you know, speaker series of some sort?
Or written pilot like you suggested?
Did I suggest that? I don't remember suggesting that, but okay.
What they do is they do ripple out. They get little by little, you know? One great, from a comprehensive plan, long-range perspective is you make sure to do something to engage youth in high school age or people, and people who may actually grow up here, you know, like my son. Where by the time he's of age and the work, to be in the workforce and to be a home owning or renting active participant in the community, boy, wouldn't it be something if I knew there's a good chance that he and a lot of others have had some kind of grounding here and recognize that kind of stuff about the exogenous factors, the legacies and the things that we're trying to, together as a community, address.
Hi.
Some of it is complicated, I will say, but.
So a couple of things. One is we can have a discussion about whether or not we want to do a broader speaker series or whether or not we want to expand the amount of time or effort that we put onto this conversation beyond what's currently scheduled. We have made a decision, I, I'm going to be honest, not to bring housing packages of code forward until we're through this process because we didn't want to piecemeal code changes prior. So staff's pretty much maxed.
I wasn't talking about code.
No, 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 I understand that, but for this process, if we wanted to go into a speakers bureau, if we wanted to expand this before we adopted the comp plan.
I'm just saying you're looking at some additional staff work.
Yeah, I didn't think we could do that.
Okay.
Well, I mean, to me, that sounds like outreach.
Yeah, I just think that in outreach, there's, there's, there's kind of, there's many ways we want to think about outreach, right? We need some short-term outreach to get at this. But I think we also need to think about, let's, let's put that trajectory out there like we do in comprehensive planning, look at the horizon and could we say, you know what, our community has gained through our efforts, some understanding of these kind of common elements of why we have some of the challenges that we have and also hopefully opportunities. But it's, I know this is a very meta way to talk about this, but it's through a lot of observance through these hearings of people that are just thinking of, they are associating some real problematic aspects with changes because that's kind of what you may do if you don't understand a lot of these undergirding issues and drivers of what, what's gotten us to where we are.
How many more times are we going to meet together like this on housing or, or how many opportunities, like how many more council and when are we planning on trying to pin this part down is my question, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, as of now, we're trying to pin it down in July. And so there would be work sessions, there's one with the planning commission scheduled for June 11th and potentially one with the council on June 18th, which I'm assuming you would want, based on the level of discussion we've had tonight, you would want to take advantage of. I would say as far as Commissioner Argo's comments and, you know, the need to explain the why, you know, I think at the policy level, at the comprehensive plan level, I mean, what I'm hearing a lot is that there's a general comfort level from this group about kind of what the language of the policies. I think a lot of the why really is when the rubber hits the road is when we actually start proposing things with the development code. We're not going to jump from, hey, we've done all our public outreach for the comprehensive plan, we're going to propose all these code amendments and we're just going to do two hearings and we're done. There's going to need to be that public engagement as part of that process. And if that's a speaker series, if that's some other level of engagement, I'm kind of speaking on the fly right now without consulting with the planning director or city manager, but we're going to need to have.
He actually did check in earlier today.
We're going to need to have, you know, discussions with the community, hey, this, you know, this is what we're proposing and this is why we're doing it, you know, let us know what you think. And that's, to be honest, if there's any opportunity for pitchforks and torches to come out, it's going to be at that stage, so we're all good for now.
We actually, so I want to, I want to just sort of, A, back David up on his statement. The, the piece of when we get to the actual code rewrites, we were intending to have more robust interactions around this and all the other components of the, the process. That's part of why I've been saying we want to batch these and have time to go through these as a team and really delve into the language that we're creating specific to code. So this is not the ending of this big process that we've now been working on for two and a half years. It's several years out still before we actually have these all in place. David's been working or at least thinking about working on a plan for how we actually process all of that. My concern is if your goal is to have a change in direction or more staff capacity before September, where we're doing more speakers bureaus, more engagement, more, then I couldn't do it.
I'm, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is maybe just, I'm not suggesting that.
Perfect.
What I'm, what I'm wondering is if there is an opportunity, I mean, so I just pulled up Minneapolis 2040 because I couldn't remember exactly, but it's not, it has nothing to do with the code, it's about the, the comp plan. And each portion of it has a why. Why does this matter? Like, why are we doing these things? And like, I'm talking about like a sentence or two about certain topics. And so if we start having, if we start incorporating some of those ideas into the meetings that are already scheduled, and I'm not talking about a ton of time, talking about a little bit of a time to answer the questions about why we're doing this, then that's just one more touch point for a community that's listening, they're engaged on these issues, they maybe have some fears. We're then at least answering some of those questions before we get to the point where they're going to feel like if we've, you know, this is all baked and they still don't understand why.
I have zero concern about a pilot article, I have zero concern about whys into the comp plan, I have zero concerns about some of those free, easy to touch places where we can integrate this into our current process. So if that's enough for right now, like if it's enough for us to write this into the comprehensive plan in these sections, I'm great. It's really more of a, we aren't going to be able to do some of what you were speaking about, about these broader conversations out into the community without resources. So for right now, I, I feel fairly comfortable based on Denny and David's typing as you were talking, that we're on board for coming up with some of that language, we're on board for having a way, an additional outreach to the community, probably not a meeting, but some sort of written outreach. And that when we get to the next phase of this, which is this code rewrite section, that we can look at how we do further engagement. Is that fair?
Sure.
And adding to what Denny had mentioned about the background reports and we have, we've prepared background reports that talk about opportunities and challenges and what our constraints are. I mean, that is largely the why of why we're doing this and why we're trying to adopt new policy language. Our plan was so outdated that we needed to address all of these things and how, you know, we can get into more, you know, this is how we're, why and how we're planning on dealing with housing affordability, this is why and how we're dealing with equity as far as groups that have been disenfranchised. I mean, there's an opportunity, you know, I think to incorporate that into the beginning of each chapter and then to pull out from that and to, you know, have that featured in meetings or, you know, in, in marketing, you know, to, you know, in articles through the pilot. So I think there are opportunities to do that.
I do want to put one last plug and I haven't talked to Denny or David about this. One of the places is I've been going through a lot of records, our historical records for the last week, a lot of our records. One of the most helpful things is actually to understand the context that it's happening in. And as much as staff can provide some of that context, it actually may be helpful for us to give credence and support to all of you as being the authors of that why. We are doing this at the request of the city, of the community, of our identity. And so I think it says a lot to have a planning commission chair and to have someone who's passionate from the council writing some of these things and getting acknowledged in the report as being the authors of those to provide that context.
Wow, what an excellent idea.
Yeah, he's, he thinks he's getting out of writing them, he's not. I think that it's a partnership with all of you, but if we're going to do this, I think it says a lot for the policy leaders in the community to actually be the ones credited with making the statements for the next 20 years so that they understand the contextual time period of what was happening.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point.
That's a great point and that's really, to me, what, what it's about. I'm, I'm saying we as, whether, as leaders, we need, we just need to have an ability to bring out the, the common threads and messaging in these ways, taking advantage of what David's plan is and putting it on ourselves to help with that too. Wanting, for me, this is just more of a clarion call for us all that, I'm just saying there isn't a great connection right now to a lot of community members on these fronts, although all the bones for, for doing that are there. We, I just hope we kind of activate it a little more.
Well, and we can, we can write all the great stuff we want, but we're the storytellers.
Right.
We have to develop that skill of making, of helping people make that connection, that emotional connection to. that emotional connection to why this is so important to us, that we're willing to do something that looks really scary to a lot of people. And that takes a lot of trust, and, and it's a skill. It's just, yeah. It's a big ask.
So, we'll be in touch with all of you for those components.
So, that's a really awesome conversation, and very important, and I think all of us get that, I'm pretty sure, looking around the table. I hate to draw us back down into the task at hand of actually sort of giving some feedback on this, this policy language, so that, but we need to do that. So, I'll, I'll start us off. I have one. On the equity goal, number one, I think when we sort of define different types of housing units as either rental or as ownership, we do ourselves a disservice.
Oh, yeah.
First of all, I don't think it's necessarily accurate. But secondly, it tends to put a bad taste in people's mouths in, on the, you know, in the realm of the rental things. And so, those are bad, these are good. I think that should be avoided. And I don't think it's necessarily true, anyway. I think duplexes could be ownership models, just as much as row houses could be rental models.
Rental models.
I already marked this up to do exactly that when I first looked at it tonight, even though I might have written it, because it's, it was the crappy language.
I think, I think I did it. I think I'm pretty sure I did that. But it was the examples. It was more, it wasn't supposed to be-
Yeah, but I agree with it.
But I think that it still does play to-
Yeah.
You can give the examples, they're just in one string. They're not, they're not separated.
Yeah, okay.
Opportunities for owners and renters, including all these things.
I do like that, yeah.
I do like that they both jumped on that grenade, because it definitely wasn't me.
Why can't that just say "housing" and forget rental and homeownership?
I mean, I do think it's- I don't think it's a bad thing to, to bring to people's mind the fact that, that will be opportunities for both in all of these aspects, because there are kids who want to move back home after college, aren't going to be able to buy something right off the bang, but maybe they'd be able to rent one of those cool townhouses that just got built, or maybe they'll be able to rent one of those cottages that just got built. Right? You want to give them opportunities to sort of live into all of this, in coming at it from different perspectives. So, I think calling it out, but not specifying which ones are which.
Well, and that gets me to another public education thing, along what, what Adam was talking about, that really always gets me, is I've been at meetings back years ago on Planning Commission, and to this day, where people talk about renters as, you know, unkempt, or, you know, problem. That's where the code is, that's where the code enforcement problems are. I can tell you in Island Station, the code enforcement problems are pretty much all owner-occupied. They are not rental properties. So, I mean, I think disabusing that notion is also, you know, something we should be doing.
So, any other things with the policy as it's written, that these guys want to tweak before the comp plan committee sees it?
I just have a clarification of why, I guess. I guess it was brought up at the Town Hall, but the affordability goal, number six, isn't that automatically kind of out, or permitted in by state rules anyways? I mean, do we really need to have that in the comp plan?
There are rules. I, I, I don't mind actually making sure that we put policies in place here, in case something was happening at the state level that-
I mean, I generally believe, personally, it's a good idea to, even if it's required at the state level, even if it's in your code, it's still not a bad idea to have policy language in your comp plan about some of these things. And on a lot of, when I look at comp plan policies, often I'm, just as a consultant, working for other communities, recommending, including some of that language, to reinforce both the code and the state requirements. So, that's my, that's my take on it. And I probably did put that one in there. So, that's, that's-
I, I didn't.
Yeah, I'm going to take the blame for that one.
And I'm good with that. I, I agree with you, that, I think a lot of people don't know that that's state law. A lot of people don't. So, the more opportunities there are for people to understand that this is not only state code, and it's not the damn state doing it to us, right, that we concur, that we are, believe the same thing, that when you remove those opportunities, you remove opportunities for people who have lower incomes.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering why that statement was in there when it was-
I mean, we don't have, for reality, we only have one or two, two, one. So, I mean-
In our city limits.
Oh, the other ones in county?
Three, three in our, three or four in our agma.
Are you done? So, I was looking at equity goal number eight, and my question is, Greg, does that get at your program's support to ownership?
Equity goal number eight?
That's the housing, you know, I would, I mean, it could, it could be rewritten to encompass that, but I almost feel like they're-
I, I would put that, this equity is about, that statement is about recognizing that homeless people need extra help. I don't think it's about buying homes. I think that would be much better in the affordability goal.
Well, maybe it shouldn't be about specific to homeless persons, but that it should be incorporating any, anyone who finds themselves in a place of need, whether they're houseless or otherwise.
I think we'd want to do it as a separate-
Yeah, it is, it is distinct enough. It's a, it's a distinct thought process.
Okay. And then I'm still caught up on equity goal number six. I understand that it's visionary, but I think it's a little too visionary. Because I don't really unders, I, it's just, it's just maybe rewriting that piece. Understand cultural differences and values when implementing development and design standards.
Is it cultural differences or values that's soaring you off?
Both.
All three of the words?
So, does the, does the last, second part of it help, including the need to accommodate-
Yeah, that's the only clear part of it, is like, okay, I understand what it means to extend family members.
That's kind of what it's talking about. That's why that's there, is to explain the types or an example of those differences that might be important to consider. I mean-
And that might not be the only thing. That might be the thing that we're aware of, that is a cultural difference. But we are not, I mean, this is a pretty darn white room, right?
Right.
So, we may not have an awareness that maybe there's cultures where they want really extended patios, so that they can have particular, I mean-
Well, I mean, I'll give you an example. There's Somali immigrants. They typically don't really want furniture. They typically sit on the floor. They have pillows, they have carpets. They don't, I, I've worked with refugee resettlement groups that, you know, they, they sent, they gave them a nice furnished apartment, and then they came back and the furniture was all pushed in one corner, and they aren't using it. But that doesn't get to, that's why I asked the question upfront. I mean, that's not getting to the development and design of buildings, because that's all constrained by housing code, I mean, building codes and health and safety stuff. And so, but I do think Angel's example of two kitchens was an interesting one, because I, we do normally consider a second kitchen to mean a separate dwelling unit, don't we?
Depends where it is, I think.
If it's outside, it's not. That's just a rich person's house. If it's inside-
Well, if it was, if it was part of a, 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 a separate unit, we'd start to call it a sec, a second unit. I mean, or if it was placed in such a way, that it might be a second unit. But I'm, you know, I'm not 100% certain. You can't have two, two kitchens, provided you haven't got the spaces separated.
Separated?
Yeah.
Okay.
But once you shut that door, then you got two units.
It's an, it'll be an interesting dilemma in the code writing, because, you know, we have units now where they're supposed to be a duplex, and they're actually, you know, operating as a fourplex, so.
Well, I mean, and, well, or, I mean, let's, yeah, I mean, we could, there, I'm sure we have houses that, like mine, you know, that were certainly built and constructed as single-family homes, but, you know, there was a full kitchen in the basement, built, you know, originally. And that, that's a cultural difference, right? It was never, it was never a duplex. There was no, you know, egress or anything like that.
It was the party room.
It was the party room. But, but though, I mean, so I think that there are lots of places where, you know, design standards could certainly, you know, call up questions about whether or not, you know, we are, we're enforcing our own idea, our own cultural, you know-
Expectations, yeah.
Yeah, on, on things. When, and we're not recognizing them as cultural, right? Because it's our limited perspective.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it's fine.
Would the word, would the word "multi" in front of "cultural" help you, Lauren?
Differences is a word I don't like.
Okay.
Because, different than what, or who?
Yeah.
Whom?
That's a good point.
Different indicates, like, maybe a right and a wrong, or different is-
Or dominant-
Preferences, or-
Does perspectives capture it?
Cultural.
Couldn't you just say "cultural values"?
Preferences? I thought preferences sounded like a good option. No?
Those are the, that's like, that to me, Adam, when you spoke up, like, those, that is like an example of like, the kind of high-level visionary thinking, and the, the amount of weight that gets put on one single word, that then institutionalizes itself into becoming a policy that then creates-
Very good point.
A web, right?
It's actually, it's a projecting, too.
Yeah.
It's projecting from a certain perspective, when we don't want to do that.
Recognizing that I'm not necessarily sure that we have the diversity of opinions and perspectives, et cetera, and background, to catch all of those. And so, I appreciated your point for that reason.
Sure. Yeah.
I mean, so, so we're not wordsmithing tonight, but I think that every, I mean, I, I agree with you. I really appreciate that point, because I do think that the word "differences" brings up problems that we should consider, and I'm sure we can come up with a better word.
Yeah, we can incorporate that.
Good discussion, you guys. Well done. Thanks to everybody.
You guys burned out my battery.
I had to steal the mayor's power cord, so.
Anything else?
Um, I just wanted to make sure people knew that there is, I'm going to see if I can pull up the details. Oh, it's going to make me, oh, no, it's, okay. There's a, on Thursday night, I just learned of this on Monday, and I saw it on the county's, I saw it from the county, and it's happening here in our city, and I'm like, why didn't we know about this? But at, on Thursday night, at the Wichita Center-
From six to eight.
From six to eight, is a thing called, yeah.
I saw that just today, and I actually asked Alma about it, because I hadn't heard about it.
I said it to Alma. I'm like, why don't we know about this?
Could you, you're not explaining anything.
Okay, yeah, let me, let me- It's a renters' rights kind of thing. It's Unite Oregon and Clackamas County together, doing a symposium. I posted it on the CMI Facebook page, so I'm looking for it now. If I can find it. It's a renter, it's like informing renters about their, our housing, our communities. Wichita Center from six to eight on, and some of us will be at CPAC, but for those who won't, come learn about basic renters' rights, what affordable housing is, and the Clackamas County Housing Bond. Free childcare, food, interpretation, at a minimum Arabic and Spanish. I wrote them and said, how about Russian and Spanish, but, and raffle. Space is limited, so please register. Anyway, they're doing one this week, and they're doing another one in June. And they're doing them both at the Wichita Center. So, we should definitely be tapping in and promoting that.
June 20th, I believe.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's easy to find on uniteoregon.org.
Okay, there you go.
And I go there every day, so I don't know why I didn't know. The county could do a better job. Anything else?
June 20th, this Thursday, and then June 20th.
We good? All right. Excellent work, everyone.
Thank you.
Don't tempt us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Denny, David, Matt, everybody.
How did I ever learn in Tamee School about-
All right. So, I will do my script, and then anybody else has any other things, you can pipe in. Volunteer to help kick off Solv's Summer Waterway Cleanups at Three Creeks Natural Area this Thursday, May 23rd, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. All cleanup supplies will be provided. Just dress for the weather and bring a filled, reusable water bottle. Volunteers will be meeting, volunteers will meet starting at 8:45 AM. Sign up to volunteer on Solv's website, located at www.solvoregon.org, yes. The farmer's market is in full swing and will occur every Sunday from May through October, from 9:30 AM to 2:00 PM in downtown at Harrison Street and Main Street. City offices and the letting library will be closed on Monday, May 27th, in honor of Memorial Day. The Fourth Annual Dogwood Dash is coming up on Saturday, June 1st, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM. A competitive 5K race will start things off with a cash prize for the first male and female winners, followed by a fun 1K for the kids. Register online until May 26. If you miss the deadline, you can register the morning of the event as well. Come out to help clean up the Tyman Johnson Park on Saturday, June 1st, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. The park is located at Southeast 37th Avenue and Tenino Street. Please meet on the boardwalk, which is in, on the loop trail in the park. The next First Friday is right around the corner, on June 7th, from 5:00 to 9:00 PM in downtown Milwaukee. The event is a great way to explore downtown. Are we going back to the old system, or are we sticking to the new? Never mind. One event not to miss each First Friday is a poetry open mic hosted by the Milwaukee Poetry Series, in St. John's Episcopal Church, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. Each open mic begins with a featured reader, and then mic opens to all others who want to read their own or others' poetry. The city's annual curbside bulky waste disposal event, the mythical curbside bulky waste-
What's mythical about it?
Because a lot of neighbors think it's not true.
Oh, right.
And, anyway. It's coming up on Saturday, June 8th, and Saturday, June 15th. Which date your street is picked up depends on where you live within the city, so please refer to the map on the city's website to find your Saturday for collection. Please keep in mind that this event is only for single-family residents with current solid waste service, who live inside the city limits of the city of Milwaukee. All items must be at the curb by 4:00 AM on your street's pickup day. Please refer to the website for information about the limits and restrictions, so that you don't put anything out that can't be picked up. Lastly, save the dates for the annual library book sale, which will take place from Friday, June 21st, through Sunday, June 23rd, and run each day from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The event will once again take place at the Waldorf School's Gymnasium. For more information about each of the events mentioned, please visit the city's homepage at www.milwaukeeoregon.gov.
Okay, I'd add a couple things. One is at that same website, there's a, on the homepage, there's a link to Carefree Sundays, and they're soliciting vendors, volunteers, and sponsors. So, you know, it's still a couple months away, but it's not too early to get involved in helping pull that off.
And note the route change, too. That's a pretty significant change from the last time we talked about it.
Right. Due to spring water construction, the route is going to be shorter. And I think the new route map, I think, was getting put up today.
It was put up today.
Yeah. Also, I was at the farmer's market for a few hours last week, and I got a lot of complaints and comments about South Downtown and construction. And I just would say, folks should go to that website as well. And then, there's a South Downtown thing that you can click on, and it gives regular construction updates, and the city's updating that at least every two weeks, and sometimes more frequently than that. than that. So you'll see the latest and please go down and patronize Painted Lady and Bloom and the archery shop if you're into archery because they're all still open businesses and we want them to survive the construction. And finally, I'm just going to repeat what we said at the end of the last meeting, which was on this Thursday, there's a session at the Wichita Center for people who are interested in learning about renters' rights, what affordable housing is, and the Clackamas County Housing Bond. They're offering childcare. It's from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Wichita Center on King Road. You can, it asks you to sign up, but you can find it on Facebook, but you can probably just go there.
Anything else? Anybody else? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.
Thank you, sir.